Good evening and welcome to the October 26, 2021 meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:03. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council, as well as Board and Commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T Universe Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/miglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called ScreenWeave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. And with that, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Kassakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. What's next, please?
Next would be flag salute.
Councilmember Brotman, would you lead us in flag salute, please?
Put your right hand to your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
On my nation, our God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affects the community. Please continue to remind us that all we accomplish is for the greater glory of you and for the services of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
Agenda for the October 26, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 19, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Before we get to the next item, I would like to ask for a motion for adjournment for the Housing Joint Meeting of the Council and Housing.
I'll move to adjourn the joint meeting of Housing and Council.
Second? Okay, that meeting is adjourned. Okay, what's next, please? Thank you.
Next would be Presentations and Appointments, 3A Agenda Preview for the meeting of Tuesday, November 2, 2021 by John Tuktalian.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. Next week in the afternoon, we'll start with a joint meeting of the City Council on the Housing Authority. There are five items on that agenda. The first two will be from Community Development. The first is a proposal to adopt a relocation plan for Housing Authority-owned land, Housing Authority-owned land, at 912 East Broadway in support of Haraway Village, which is a 40-unit, 100% affordable rental housing project reserved for seniors. Second item from Community Development will be a public hearing for the California Public Finance Authority's proposed issuance of approximately $33 million in tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds. That'll be in support of the Citrus Crossing Project located at 900 East Broadway. That, too, will be a senior affordable housing project. The third item will be from Community Services and Parks regarding the status of program planning for the fiscal year 2223, CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan, followed by another report from Community Services and Parks regarding HUD Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program application for Fremont Park renovation project. And the final item that evening will be from Community Development and Parks regarding approval of a funding recommendation by the Glendale Community of Care for the submission of the Glendale Community of Care's funding application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. For the evening's council meeting, we have two consent items. The first will be from Community Services and Parks regarding an amendment to the Copy and Design Professional Services Agreement currently in place, followed by a report from Public Works regarding a professional services agreement to support the GTV6 technology and space planning project. There will be one more consent item there, and that's from Human Resources regarding the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale, also known as the GCA Association. Under action items, Community Services and Parks will have one report regarding the donation of the Pellon County Park and Glen Oaks Park playground equipment to the Armenian Educational Foundation. And the final report that evening will be from Public Works regarding the removal and replacement of roofing systems at Rockhaven. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you, Dr. Tucktalian. And what's next, please?
3B Appointment of Boards and Commission Member by Councilmember Agajanian. This is Annette de Galistien, Building and Fire Boards Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian.
Yes. The candidate, Annette Galistien, has graduated from University of Southern California and then attended Pepperdine University School of Law, and she's an attorney. She lives in Glendale and works in Glendale for Gasco Inc., and I would like to nominate her for Building and Fire Board of Appeals.
Thank you. And do we have a... Do we need a second on this and then a vote?
We don't need a second. You can go straight to the vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you. Is she here to make remarks or not?
No.
I am on the phone.
Oh, you are? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Very nice.
Yes. Very briefly, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Agajanian for appointing me to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. I look forward to serving on this board to the best of my abilities and collaborating effectively with the remaining board members. And thank you to all the city staff and council members as well for allowing me to serve on this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Galistien. Good luck and congratulations. And what's the next? You're welcome. What's the next one, please?
I'm Mr. 3C Appointment of Boards and Commission Member by Councilmember Brotman, Regina Joy Alkazar, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. I do believe she's on the line.
Yes, okay. And it's Councilmember Brotman.
Yes, I put her... I put Regina Alkazar's name in last week, and I mentioned, but I'll mention again, that she did her undergraduate work at USC in policy planning and development. Then she went to Columbia and got a master's degree in urban planning, and she's currently working for a group called the Local Initiatives and Support Corporation, which does... It's a nonprofit that works on community development. And she is the child of Filipino immigrants, lives in South Glendale, and has a child. So I think... Should we vote first and then have Regina make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Yes, yes. So with that nomination, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Ms. Alkazar, would you like to make some comments? Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm very grateful to be in this space with you all tonight, so thank you to the City Council for granting me this amazing honor to serve the city as Commissioner. And of course, thank you to Councilmember Brotman for the opportunity to be considered for this seat. I really look forward to working with the other Commissioners, the Parks Department, and the Glendale community to continue to improve our parks and services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, and what's next, please?
Next would be consent items, including minutes. Following our routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I would like to pull item 4A, please.
So can I have a... Would I move someone's motion or...
I would like to move...
Consent calendar?
Yes, I would like to move the item, the balance of the items for the consent item.
Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. Roll call, please.
It was seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Roll call. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. And I pulled this item because I'd like for the community to hear exactly what we're doing with food recovery services, what that means for everyone, and explain how it's going to work.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. I'm going to invite Dan Hardgrove, our Assistant Director of Public Works, to present a brief PowerPoint presentation, brief but informative.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council, Dan Hardgrove, Assistant Director of Public Works. And just to give you a brief but informative PowerPoint presentation on the edible food recovery RFP and program. I know the Council is very much aware of SB 1383. One of the key components of SB 1383 is the edible food recovery requirements. 20% of currently disposed edible food must be recovered by 2025 statewide. That's a statewide goal. The cities will play an active role in coordinating tracking the distribution of edible food produced by businesses. There's two levels of businesses, which I'll get to in a moment. In fact, we are held responsible, even if we have the franchise haulers and private businesses, we're held responsible for ensuring compliance with the state law. These requirements go into effect initially in January 1, 2022. Just a quick understanding of what commercial edible food recovery or commercial edible food generators are. Tier 1 are, which starts in 2022, are wholesale food vendors, food service distributors and providers, large grocery stores and supermarkets. Tier 2 would be the next level that starts in 2024, includes larger restaurants, hotels, education facilities, large venues and events, state agencies, and health facilities. Here's two... Here's kind of what the requirements are for each of those two milestones. In 2022, jurisdictions must establish a food recovery program, including the tier 1 generators. And jurisdictions must begin food recovery capacity planning, which is part and parcel of that. We also need to have a deep outreach program and begin inspections of tier 1 generators and food recovery organizations within the year. 2024 is... Will go to be the commercial food generators that we... I mentioned previously, the little bit smaller agencies. We need to begin inspections of tier 2 in 2024 and start taking enforcement actions with non-compliant entities. So some of the scope of the contract, the RFP that was released, was to hire a consultant that would coordinate with the city, of course, and our franchise haulers. Again, all of the commercial establishments will be part of the franchise system, so they will work very closely with the franchise haulers. They will need to assess, identify, confirm businesses, and assist them with implementation, have a significant outreach component, an education component to their responsibilities, and then they will also need to have a level of compliance that they need to oversee and return information back to us, data back to us. That's what the compiling of the annual recycle, CalRecycle Report is, as well as identifying food insecure populations, finding the means to get the food to them, and finding where the food should be going. So to this end, we initiated a RFP that was released in late July. There was a... It was through our normal, regular means, which is posting our website, through EBIT, as well as there was a... We've located about eight potential agencies, and we sent direct invites to the proposal process. We had held a non-mandatory pre-proposal meeting on August 3. We ended up receiving only one proposal back from Recreate Collaborative on... When it was sunset date of August 31. They're working... The Recreates working with two other subcontractors, Food Finders and Carrot. Food Finders is kind of the operational end of their work effort, and Carrot is the technology end in terms of methodology for getting in compliance and reporting for the CalCycle The good news is we went through the selection process, and Recreate had really outstanding proposal. We're very pleased with their offering, and we hope to, with approval tonight, start work as early as January 1, 2022. Some of the qualifications, just to kind of let you peruse the... Some of the qualifications of both Recreate and their subcontractors. Sound and Bertino County JPA, City of Los Angeles, City of Malibu, City of Culver City have utilized them. They also have had a lot of working relationships with franchise haulers, private haulers, which I think will serve us well in terms of coordinating with our four franchise haulers. And a broad range of activities involved with food recovery and compliance with state regulations. And that's the end of my short report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor, you're unmuted. Mayor Devine, we can't hear you. Madam Mayor?
Did any of my colleagues have a question?
Yes.
Okay. My question to you is, and this is what I want people to understand in our community, can you explain how we are going to get food to the food insecure with this program?
Madam Mayor, members of Council, what the objective, one of the key objectives of the hauler... I'm sorry, the consultant is to do is to go through the process of identifying all of our generators, to identify and work with a recovery agency, an agency that can transport the food, and then also to assess the community and identify organizations where they can connect the food with the needy population.
So you're saying, like, for instance, Whole Foods, if they have food left over at the end of the day, that, you know, they would otherwise throw away this consult... These consultants would make sure that the food would go to, let's say, Essentia or Family Promise or Salvation Army?
Correct, yeah. They will... They will identify the generators, they'll work with the, basically, the transportation, and they will ensure that it gets to the destination that is desired. Essentia would be a perfect example.
Thank you, thank you. And with that, thank you so much.
Yes. I had a quick question.
Madam.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes. On page 4, Mr. Hardgrove, the tier 1 is implemented 2022. What's the reason that for tier 2, we have to wait until 2024?
Mayor Devine, members of Council, Councilmember Agajanian, the... I think the objective was to really identify the primary source generators first and work for compliance, make them the primary target of putting these programs together. They're usually a little bit more... They have the resources to... And they do... A lot of them do this type of thing already, so it's a bigger group in terms of the materials that they're producing, and they have a system... A lot of them are used to this type of a system already, even though it's... We're in the early stages of SB 1383.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a motion to move this item?
I move item 4A second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you. And what's next, please?
Next would be City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Yes, I do have one item.
Okay, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, this is something... Let me take this off. Something I brought up two or three weeks ago regarding reusables for dine-in restaurants. And so my request is that we consider an ordinance requiring reusable food service ware for dine-in restaurants. The Board of Supervisors, LA County Board of Supervisors, is considering something like this, and I've given staff draft language that they're looking at. The City of LA is also working on this. I'm not sure to what extent they're trying to align with county, but hopefully they are, and Long Beach is working on this, and Culver City apparently recently adopted an ordinance like this. So my request would be that we pair this with the report that's coming, I think, early next year on the citywide ban on single-use plastic, so that we can bring these together and do one single set of outreach rather than, you know, piecemeal these. So that is my request.
Madam Mayor, I understand that a few weeks back, there wasn't anyone who seconded this. I am always open to hearing any of my colleagues' suggestions for discussion and debate here, so I would second that request. And, you know, I don't know about full-blown ordinance coming directly back to us, but I would like to have a discussion about what it would entail to expand that or have it comport to what our neighbors may be doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Kassakian. Okay, anyone else? All right then, I have a couple of items. First of all, we all... I think most of us attended the Filipino-American Festival celebrating the history, Filipino-American History Month, and also Fay Bag's 31st anniversary of existence. And I just want to let this community know that we appreciate our Filipino-American friends and community members for your contributions to our community. Thank you very much. I also attended the Montrose Arts and Crafts Festival, and wow, it was better, I think, than ever. It was huge. There were thousands of people. I mean, it was very crowded. I went on Saturday, and I know it also went on Sunday as well, but it was a huge success. And I just want to congratulate, in particular, Dale Dawson, whom I saw and Mary, and all the other Montrose Shopping Park Association members that helped to put that on, and community members and volunteers. It was fantastic. So congratulations. And I know it was great to have it out in the open air and people coming and enjoying. Montrose restaurants were crowded and people were shopping, so it was very good. It was a great experience. The next item I have has a little bit more gravity to it. It's come to my attention that a formal complaint has been lodged against one of our DRB members by one of the colleagues for violating several provisions of the Code of Conduct pertaining to decorum and civility to other members. I believe it's time for council to address this issue, so I would need a second to agendize this matter.
I will second.
Thank you very much. And that concludes my comments.
Madam Mayor?
Are there any? Yes.
Yes, just one thing that I thought maybe you would mention, but I'll mention it, is that we also, I think all of us, or most of us, attended the Glendale Association of Realtors Gala, 100th anniversary, or 101st, actually, and that was also like the Philippine American Business Association meeting was very, very well-attended, and it was nice to... It's nice to see these happening now in real time with people face-to-face and not over Zoom, so it was a great event, and I want to congratulate them for a 100-year achievement, which is not trivial.
Of course. Any staff comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Kassakian?
There is now considerable discussion, a few articles that were in the LA Times about redistricting commissions and boundaries being drawn that would impact our city. And I think that right now, there's enough available... There has been enough time for us to at least get some understanding as to what has happened between the last census and this most recent one, or the one 10 years ago and the one that we just completed. So I'd like to request that we have a report and a discussion. There's... I saw a preliminary map of what the potential congressional district that would include Glendale would look like, as well as any other impacts in terms of population growth or shrinkage and in what areas. So I guess my request is for a presentation on the census data, and if that requires us to do an afternoon session for us to study it more closely or more in-depth, that would be something that I would request. And, you know, I think it's... Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. And I don't know if it's appropriate to necessarily ask for our other governing bodies in the city, like the school district and the college board, to make presentations to us, but I was at a conference that was sponsored by USC last week where I heard a very alarming and disturbing statistic that at first it was difficult for me to believe until I looked it up, and indeed, it's true, that out of 50 states, California is last in high school graduation rate. Out of 50 states, California is the last in high school graduation rates. I would like to believe, and I would think, that Glendale is a... I would like to believe, and I would think that Glendale is above what the California average is, but, you know, the educated population of the city, I see some of my council members looking inquisitively, it is indeed true, 84% for graduation rate for California, we're graduating 84% of our high school students, but it is still dead last. And so I would like to know how our schools and colleges are performing, what their statistics are. Ultimately, we're all in this boat together. They are producing the workforce both here for the city and for the companies that we hope to locate here. So if we do have a rate that's better than what the California average is, that should be a selling point for individuals and families that wish to relocate here and hopefully be an incentive for companies to be headquartered here as well. So I don't know if anyone would like to also know what those statistics are, or what would be an appropriate form to have that in.
Well, Councilmember Kasakian, thank you for mentioning that. And of course, with the redistricting, the supervisory districts are really being controversial and talked about a great deal, so might be good to look into those. And secondly, we are in the process of a joint meeting with the school board and superintendent, so when that occurs, I'm sure we can ask for that information from Superintendent Etienne.
That will be fine. I'll allow my request to be deferred to discussion at those meetings. Thank you.
Yes, okay, you're welcome. And any comments from staff? Did I get a no on that?
No, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
What's next, please?
Community event announcements, three-minute portion. I do have two callers on the line at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Vahes Sarajian, you have three minutes. Vah, go ahead. Mr. Sarajian? Vahes Sarajian? David Eisenberg, you have three minutes. David, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and council members. I'm calling, my name is David Eisenberg. I've been a Glendale homeowner since 1985, and I'm calling to request an extension to the PRDIR for the Grace and Power Plant. And the reason I'm calling to request the extension is because GWP has been asked repeatedly to tell how much each of the alternatives cost, and they have not provided that information. They have also been asked to tell how much the permit hours for running that operation would be, and that hasn't been provided. And I do not understand why Mark Young would not know those numbers on the top of his head because this is a big project. I'd like to relate it to something on your agenda. On item 8B, you're going to talk about a dog park. Could you imagine having a proposal saying, "We'd like you to vote to approve a dog park, but we're not going to tell you what it's going to cost, and we're not going to tell you how late those dogs could be, or if there's going to be any limits on any of the noise." And so I'm having a horrible time. I, you know, I'm trying to figure out my comments for the DEIR, and without knowing what the difference is in cost between Alternative 7 and Alternative 8, and how much each engine would cost in Alternative 7, I can't make an informed comment. And without knowing the real hours of operation, not the hours that they claim, which is 15%, because there's a little clause in the DEIR buried in one of the back appendices that say those hours in the DEIR have no relation to the permit hours. So I would like you to, first of all, ask Mark Young to provide those numbers right now, and then I'd like to request that you extend the comment period and give us at least 45 days from when those numbers are provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg. I'd like to call up Mark Young, please, to address as much of these questions as he can.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Mark Young, General Manager, Glendale Water and Power. When we're looking at the final EIR, we're looking at approval for the final EIR, and then what we're going to do is we'll come back with price on the alternatives. This, what we're asking for is not that you approve the project yet, that you approve the environmental impact report. We're in the process right now of getting pricing for demolition, and we're updating pricing for the hardware, and we're not in a position right now to be able to give definitive pricing on either of the options. The permit hours, the permit hours won't happen until we have a firm project that we can provide AQMD with, and then we'll be able to provide firm operating hours for the project. But at this time, we can't give either one of those until EIR gets approved, or we get direction from council.
Thank you. Mr. Young? Okay. I hope that answers some of his questions. Are there any other phone calls?
Yes, I do have two more.
Thank you.
Vahes Sarajian? Vah, you have three minutes. Can you hear me? Mr. Sarajian, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, you have three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Glendale is the fourth-largest city in LA County, yet the black population of Glendale is only 1.8%. How is that possible? It is because racism is this former sundown town with a large, and is thriving, thanks to its leadership. Let me tell you how new the City Council has contributed to keeping Glendale white. I am the owner of a home located at Hardest Drive. I made my home available to short-term rental from the beginning, and as number of my guests were black Americans. At the time I opened my home to guests, I did not know that Glendale was a former sundown town where black Americans were not welcome and were systematically excluded. One of the first hate incidents I witnessed was in 2017, where my neighbors approached me in front of my house and told me to stop renting to this, my house to this kind of people, that I brought South Central to this neighborhood. One neighbor, knowing that he was a citizen, elbowed copass as if he was going to fight me. Following this incident, at least 43 calls were made to Glendale Police Department by certain people in my neighborhood. I made a public record request for emails sent to the police department tonight by my neighbors. The emails were rampant, were racist, racism, were using words to describe my Black guilt as gangster, stating I caught. I felt like I was living in a gangster neighborhood, another quote. Frankly, I had been fired one night earlier, I was even scared to go back home. Another quote, "This is a very scary situation, and not something I should have stood up with in the city of Glendale," and, and quote. You sided with the people who told me that I brought South Central to this neighborhood. When you voted to ban short-term rentals, you sided with the people who assaulted me for hosting Black guilt. What truly terrifies is that I'm not the only homeowner that's experienced racially motivated police calls for Black guilt. Next council meeting, I will discuss the racially motivated police service call made at Montecito House in Glendale. On August 25, 2018, a Black family was surrounded by four police vehicles for three hours due to an email from a neighbor complaining about vulgar rap music. The neighbor sent an email to City Manager Yasmin Beers and asked him to put the matter on the council agenda. Interestingly enough, there was an email from a police officer on the scene that confirmed the people were doing nothing wrong. They may not have been doing anything wrong, but they were Black in Glendale.
Thank you, Mr. Sarajian. Your three minutes is up. Thank you very much.
Next caller?
Madam Mayor, that caller hung up. I do have a caller for item 80.
Oh, okay, then we'll move on. Thank you. Next, what is the next item, please?
Next item is eight action items, 8A Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding MOU Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association, GMA, on behalf of the General Managers and Resolution Addressing Executives. One, resolution approving the adoption, the MOU commencing July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Management Association General Managers MOU. Three, resolution of appropriation in the sum of $386,336 to provide funding for the MOU agreement between the City and Glendale Management Association General Managers for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021. Resolution providing the establishment of classification titles and compensation for executives.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, Members of City Council, Glendale Management Association, or GMA, is one of the five employee bargaining units that we have here in the city, and it includes all mid-level and upper-management employees, as well as technical and professional employees. This MOU going to cover approximately 335 budgeted positions. After several months of negotiation, staff is pleased to present this MOU to council for consideration. It's been, staff and negotiation team has done a remarkable job in bringing us to this point, and I wanted to also acknowledge Allison Finch, President of the Board of GMA, who was present here with us today. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Doyle, our Director of Human Resources, to present the item to you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this item before you are resolutions approving a three-year MOU between the City and Glendale Management Association on behalf of the General Managers for a period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. This agreement covers roughly 335 budgeted positions, handling managerial, administrative, technical, and professional duties throughout every city department. This MOU is the culmination of over four months of negotiations between the City and GMA. As with the other groups we've negotiated with this past year, the primary concerns brought forth by the GMA had to do with maintaining a reasonably competitive compensation structure and to aid in the recruitment and retention of these employees, particularly in light of the inflation that we're currently experiencing. Last year, in what were the early stages of the pandemic, the GMA came forward with an MOU proposal that contained no cost-of-living adjustments nor any benefit enhancements for the entire year. Given the uncertainty at that time, this was definitely an appropriate strategy. This year, although the pandemic is still with us, we believe that we now have the basis for an agreement that will provide a modest level of some adjustments for this group. The proposed three-year MOU contains the following. In year one, a 1.5% cost-of-living adjustment effective now, a 1% reduction in the PERS cost-sharing effective February of 2022. In the second year, it's a straight 2% cost-of-living adjustment effective July of 2022, and in the third year, it's a 1.25% cost-of-living adjustment coupled with a 1.25% reduction in the PERS cost-sharing, and that would take effect July of 2023. There are some adjustments to a few of the special pay categories and certifications affecting environmental inspections, the water treatment and distribution licensing, wastewater maintenance, as well as workplace safety enforcement. This MOU also, for the first time, recognizes the Juneteenth holiday. Going forward, we will have June 19 as a city holiday. Again, after several months of negotiations, we're very pleased to have this done. This matter was brought before the General Membership of the GMA General Managers, and it was approved by 68% of the vote. At this time, we're asking that the City Council approve this MOU as well. Additionally, separate and apart from the GMA MOU is a single resolution covering executive-level classifications, which keeps the PERS cost-sharing provisions between executives and GMA similarly aligned. Again, this is a separate resolution from the other three relating to the GMA MOU, and the council can take that resolution separately if they so choose. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. I do also, as Mr. Galanian did, I do want to recognize Allison Finch, who is here tonight. She is a civilian administrator in the police department, and she assumed the presidency of the GMA right in the middle of negotiations due to the sudden retirement of Craig Hinckley. It was an extremely difficult position to be put in, but she handled her duties very well and effectively brought these proceedings to a close. So with that, Members of Council, I'd be happy to, again, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. If there are no questions, we have a caller on this item?
Madam Mayor, at this point, we have two callers for this item.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Susan Wolfson, you have three minutes. Susan, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for being of service to our community and for the opportunity to speak about this agenda item this evening. Tonight, I'm calling as a member of the Blue Ribbon Pension Review Committee that has been formed to study the city's various pension obligations with the goals of, first, communicating detailed, correct, and complete information about these obligations, and, second, suggesting strategies to lessen their impact on our city's financial stability and sustainability. This MOU, however, will impede the ability of the city to implement any suggestions that we may make. The MOU will lock the city in for another three years during which it will be unable to negotiate better terms to ensure its financial sustainability or make other adjustments. And although this is not an extremely long term for an MOU of this type, neither is it very brief. In light of the fact that it took years of discussion and hesitant moves to finally create this committee, during which the city committed itself to MOU after MOU, we really would appreciate it if you would be negotiating very brief terms for any MOUs you negotiate while we're at least in session. This would allow the city to act sooner rather than later and result in superior negotiated agreements. We're not, we're working very hard to combat resistance to meaningful change. Our interest is not in depriving anyone of reasonable earned and legally mandated benefits. We seek to make judicious adjustments through a deep understanding of the assumptions and calculations made for these obligations. We are saddled with many unusual problems, agendas that have lengthy presentations that may be elliptical to the actual work we need to do, and the apparent indifference of many of the stakeholders that we're trying to represent. So we really would appreciate having the city not commit to these agreements. Although there's a cost involved in negotiating MOUs, but I think it's rather negligible when you concur it to the many, many millions of dollars the city is already paying annually just for the unfunded liabilities incurred by previous MOUs. In addition, I couldn't help noticing, and I think Mr. Doyle alluded to this, this "cost sharing," he called it, but I think this is an allusion to the fact that the city will once again be paying the employee share of the PERS contribution, which I noticed on pages 32 to 34 of the MOU. In the social security world occupied by the vast majority of Americans, there is an employer contribution and an employee contribution, and never shall the twain meet. The employee always pays their 6.25%. The employer never pays the employee share. And I have to say, I think that this is, it's not right for the city to play, pay the employee portion. Anyhow, these are my comments, and I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I hope I met my time limit, and again, thank you. Good night.
Next caller is Herbert Milano. Herbert, you're live. You got three minutes, Herbert.
Thank you. Mayor Devine, Members of the City Council, for a long time, I have seen a troubling trend that despite the downturns in the economy, somehow the MOUs, the Memorandums of Understanding, the increased pay and increased pensions, continue to increase unabated. We have an unemployment rate of over 10% right now. Last week, the Housing Authority and the City Council were trying to scrape $7 million in order to be able to assist individuals who are unable to pay sufficiently for their residences. Today earlier, we were talking about... Earlier, you were talking about other measures to be able to assist individuals that don't have enough food to eat. So we look at the economic situations of the residents and the taxpayers, and yet, that is not taken into consideration when these MOUs are being generated. We could have economic downturns, we could have significant problems that are maybe weather-related, national emergencies, local emergencies, and yet, the MOUs don't take into account the fluctuations that we have that basically impact the taxpayer, the resident. I believe that an MOU for managers should be at the maximum one year long. That way, the city can also evaluate the performance of management to be able to meet the needs of the residents. And those are my two comments, but I'd like for the City Council to consider in deciding whether to accept this MOU or whether to limit it to only one year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any other callers?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any more callers.
Hi.
Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues?
Yes.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I have, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Agajanian.
While the caller was called a little bit earlier, Mr. Matt Doyle and Michelle Flynn, they were shaking their heads. Do you want to answer to the caller, please? Because I want to hear that what she was saying, that apparently you were not approving, both of you shaking your heads. So I thought maybe you want to tell us a little bit about this.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Agajanian, I believe I heard Ms. Wolfson say that the city plays, pays the employee share of the CalPERS contribution. I believe that's what she said, and that would indicate what I was shaking my head at, because the city does not pay the employee share. The employees pay the full share, whether we're talking about our general employees, our management employees, our public safety employees. The employees pay that full share. It's the employer's share that the city does pay the bulk of that, but even with that, the employees are on the hook for a portion of that as well, which is a bit unusual, but it's one area that the City of Glendale has been sort of in the forefront of this in addressing our pensions.
Thank you. I see that Ms. Michelle Flynn has joined us, and do you want to make some comments, Michelle?
Right, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, yes, I did also want to echo Mr. Doyle's comments. The city does not pay the employees' portion of their CalPERS payment. The employees have paid that for a very long time. This MOU does not change any of that. The cost-share reduction that is happening is the employer's portion. The GMA pays 4% currently, and in this first year in February, it will be reduced by 1%. What that does for the city is it is less cost than if we had to give a COLA to the group. So it does save us money if we're going to try and give back to the employees a little bit, and we didn't do it in the form of a COLA, we did it in the form of the cost-share.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. I want to thank Matt and his group, and Allison, and Michelle, and everyone that was in on these negotiations. I know it wasn't easy, and I also want to thank those that represented the GMA, General Managers, and the executives. Thank you. It was, it was tough, but you got it done, and I think it's fair. So with that, I'll entertain, can I, can we take, Mr. Garcia, can we take all four together?
They can, unless there's an objection from any of the council members.
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we take them separately.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make one other point, if I may.
Okay.
And that is?
Councilmember Najarian.
That is the request that we wait until the Blue Ribbon Panel completes their discussion and findings. We cannot do that. We are under the obligation to begin negotiations in good faith with the bargaining unit upon, actually, before the expiration of the contract. So, am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, sir.
We can't say, hold on, we've got a, our panel is going to come forth with findings that are going to come to council, and we may adopt, we may not adopt. So, you know, I'll, anyway, I just would like to say that's something we could not do. We did not have the option to put the negotiations on hold until there were some findings from the commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I want to say.
Madam Mayor?
You're welcome.
I just have a question.
Councilmember Kusakian?
I want to thank Councilmember Najarian, because I think it's an important point to raise. I don't know how many individuals in the public know what our restrictions are, where, what the process is like for these negotiations. I can tell you that I've learned quite a bit in the last one year plus, but assuming that there is something from the commission that comes forward, that there are suggestions, what can we do with our bargaining units if one of them is a suggestion that requires us to renegotiate something?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, at that point, we would be in a position of possibly, you know, readdressing our bargaining groups and asking them to come forward if there is some type of a significant recommendation or change proposed by this committee. They would not necessarily be obligated to comply, but we could certainly request a reopening of meeting and conferring, and they can either say yes or no, but nevertheless, you know, the impact that this committee could have could be quite substantial, and it would certainly be subject of meeting and confer with these groups.
And I appreciate that answer, and I also appreciate the callers who have called with their suggestions, and I think that, you know, they raise good points, but, you know, we are also within a process. The train has left the station in regard to these negotiations, and we are here now, so we have to consider these agreements that we've come to with these bodies. But it is important to note that we do have this Blue Ribbon Commission to study this issue, and we should take any suggestions or recommendations that come from this body seriously, which is one of the reasons why I requested and asked that our unions, the city unions, be involved and a part of it, because knowledge and understanding of what we face as a city financially and what the community faces, our residents faces, critical to making significant changes to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
And I also, was there another comment? I just wanted to say that I think the residents should know that, and realize that council is very concerned about fiscal responsibility and fiscal sustainability, and we work with staff very diligently to make sure that we are fair to everyone involved and that we keep the fiscal responsibility and sustainability of the city in the forefront of all the decisions that we make. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment before we take a roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, and I'm kind of echoing some of my colleagues' comments here, but I wanted, I do want to thank the two callers that called in. Those are, they're both on our Blue Ribbon Committee. They are both, you know, serious people with serious concerns and well-articulated. I think one thing that the public probably doesn't understand is the recent history with many of our bargaining groups, but in particular, this group and the GCA, in terms of getting increases that have been generally below the rate of inflation. And I don't know if Mr. Doyle would have these numbers off the top of his head, but I think if you were to look back over a 10-year period, you would be seeing a significant loss of purchasing power by these groups. So they are taking on some of the burden of our fiscal position, but I don't think it's fair that we would put, or attempt to put, the entire solution of our fiscal situation, which is concerning, but to put it all on the employees is not going to work, and I think it's going to have to, we're going to have to find ultimately a shared solution, whatever that is. But I just, I just think it's important for people to understand that we, that they, the bargaining units have been, I think, very responsible over the last several years in not making, you know, ridiculous demands, and in fact, I think, I think it was probably fair to say that they have lost significant purchasing power.
That's correct. Mayor Divine, Members of Council, Councilmember Brotman, in the last 10 years, the rate of inflation, the cost of living, has greatly outstripped the rather modest adjustments that all of our employee groups have taken, and your points are really, really well-taken, particularly in the last year, or, I'm sorry, the last 10 years with the recession that had occurred in '08, '09. Just looking at some charts that I had looked at, you know, with this particular group, we saw, again, starting in year 2009, no cost-of-living increase from 2009 all the way up to 2015, I mean, year after year of nothing, including in year 2010, 2011, where they took a 1.5% pay reduction as a result of cost-sharing increase. In the years since then, there have been some moderate adjustments in the 1% to 2% range, but we're looking at roughly, you know, again, in the last 10, 11 years, COLAs that amount to barely 6% over that period of time, whereas the cost of living, at least the Consumer Price Index relative to this particular region, has been well over 25%. So if you compare 6% cost-of-living adjustments for these employees with 25%, that is a significant discrepancy in their buying power, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
And finally, I just would like to say, Mr. Doyle, I hope that you will
Madam Mayor?
Let this, let this committee, this pension committee, know all of these facts, so that they understand when we make decisions like this, what they're based on. And I think that type of history and those numbers would, or should convince them that what we're doing is really the responsible thing to do and the fair thing to do. Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, I just want to say, I thought this is not the right, the right time to raise anybody's salaries. That's generally what I think. We're, we have budget deficits. I mean, if we wouldn't get the money from the government, if they wouldn't help us, we would have a serious deficit now, and during this deficit, we are raising the taxes. I think it's not the right thing to do. But however, for those who are worried, I have to say, what we have done and what we have accepted is average of $433 per person, average increase per month, of course, $433 per month, per person. We have 335 people in this group, and as I said, the average, these are the managers. They are, they have kind of a higher or average salaries they have, and adding $433 per month is not much, in my opinion. That's why I went along with this increase, because as has been mentioned here, the cost of living went through the roof, and we had to do something. You know, we have 5.2, 2% or 4% cost-of-living increase, so I think this somehow makes sense. What we have done makes sense, although I had some concerns. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for?
Yes.
Eight A1.
I will move that item.
Second.
Or second?
Seconded by Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes. Number two? Motion?
Yes, I would move item number two.
Second.
Second? Najarian, roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Divine?
Yes. Number three?
I will move number, item number three.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes, and item number four.
Item number four, I will move item number four, yes.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Divine?
Yes, thank you very much. Next item?
Next item would be Community Service in Parks Regarding Feedback in Exploring the Feasibility of a Dog Park. Motion to provide feedback on exploring the feasibility of a dog park at Pellicone Park or other parks.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Divine, Members of City Council, this item is presented to you this evening in response to Councilmember Kusakian's request for staff to explore the feasibility of providing a dog park in the city. Staff has identified three potential sites in different areas of the city, and I'm going to turn it over to Onik Bolanikian to present the item to you for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Divine. Thank you, Mayor Divine, Members of the Council. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, a few months ago, council directed staff to explore the possibilities of providing a dog park in one of the existing parks or open spaces in Glendale. So we did locate three areas, one being Camino San Rafael, which is an open space area, about two acres in size. The second area is Brand Park Picnic Area, North End, that's behind the Brand Library, and the third one is Pellicone Park. So Camino San Rafael is an open space that we manage and maintain. It's, the developed portion is about two acres in size. It's located on the east side of Glendale, accessible by the two freeway off a mountain. It's away from the residential area. We do have utilities located 200 yards away from the site, but this area will need development, restrooms, parking, and park, additional park amenities. The second site is Brand Park Picnic Area. This is at the north end, it's about half an acre. It does have existing utilities and infrastructure, does have a picnic area with some tables and benches. We do have some live oaks there as part of the Arbor Day program. Some of those trees would need to be relocated, and that area is heavily used by picnickers and a number of hiking associations before and after their hikes. The third area that we looked at is Pellicone. Pellicone is also about half an acre. It's leveled, easily accessible. It has existing utilities and infrastructure, and the site is bordered by commercial on the north, and west, and residential on the east. Some elements of a dog park, we would need a chain link or tubular metal fencing, at least six feet high, double gates to allow adjustment for a dog park environment, and surfacing with natural turf, decomposed granite, or wood mulch. Additional elements we would like to include, include a restroom, disposable bags, water fountains, small little play area for the dogs, shade trees, natural shade trees and shade structures, parking, which will include accessible parking, and also regulatory signage. The dog parks should include two areas, one for large dogs and one for small dogs. The Pellicone area, we want to include a 17,000 square feet for large dogs and about 5,000 square feet for small dogs. So what's next? Once when council gives us direction on Wood Park to look at, we will have community meetings and outreach. Hopefully, we'll start that in January of 2022. We will come back to council with final approval on the in January of 2022. We will come back to council with final approval on location. Between March and August, we will design the park and work with a consultant on construction documents, and hopefully bidding and construction start of August 2022 and December of 2022. I'll be happy to take any questions from Madam Mayor.
Yes, I have.
Yes. Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I requested this item. And for the record, I am not a pet owner, despite my son's best efforts. We do not own, I do not own a dog, but I, or cat or anything. We don't even own a goldfish. But I have visited and I've walked by the dog park in Los Angeles, just outside of Glendale's borders, over by the zoo. There, I've been, walked past the dog park in Silver Lake around the reservoir, which is very popular. We have one just in county line, over the county line in North Glendale. And I know how important and popular for pet owners this is as an amenity. Also, when we've had some of our local downtown developments completed on their rooftop decks, I know a few of them have had a little patio area for their pets. I know that the Breo, I believe, has one and a few others do. There is a need for this. In fact, in speaking to a developer not too long ago, they were talking about how spaces for pet owners within their developments is becoming one of their most popular amenities, particularly during the pandemic. And how pet companionship has also helped a lot of people get through the pandemic. I think that it's important for us to have a dog park in Glendale, to have this for our residents who are pet owners. As far as locations, I, I am intrigued by these suggestions, but I have one more suggestion. I want to throw an audible here and see what the feasibility would be of using one of our city parking lots as a location. There is one location in particular that I, I have in mind, and it's between the Armory and the Elks Lodge. That could possibly be a location. Right now, I think it's a city lot that is being utilized by one of the local dealerships. I think it's in a part of the city that probably is more park poor, or where residents are living in denser areas and may not have the ease of access to take their dogs to one of, to the park. Certainly not make it all the way up to Dog Park, which is essentially in North Glendale, but even though it's not in Glendale proper, it's part of Crescent Valley Park, and the lines kind of get blurred in that part. So that would be one question I have. And in terms of the other sites, Pelencani Park is within a few blocks of my house. I am concerned about how the residents may react to it, although I think it's ideally situated. And you mentioned that it's a flat area, and leaves enough room for both the ball field there and the exercise equipment, which I think were fairly newly installed. And the one by Brand Park, I received some questions about it. There was one comment from folks who are studying owl patterns or issues up there. I, I don't know how that would interact and how it would perhaps disturb those, the researcher studies. But certainly, if we can find someplace in, in part of Glendale that's more easily accessible to more residents, that would be my preference. And I'll be excited to see it eventually come to completion. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. Before I go to my colleagues and probably to the phone, I just want to say that I brought this up a few years ago, and at the request of Adams Hill residents. And they wanted a dog park. And we even had a lot that was for sale, but of course, the city couldn't, couldn't afford it at the time. So that leads me to the reason I'm, I'm speaking right now, because along with you, Mr. Kusakian, I have another idea as well. And what I, and I've asked Mr. Galanian, and I'm hoping that he, he did his research. I thought that perhaps on the Garfield campus that they're building, in the Adams, the Adams Hill area, that could be a dog park. And I would like to ask Mr. Galanian, did you get an opportunity to talk to Dr. Vier and get their comments?
Madam Mayor, I, I haven't been able, I haven't had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Vier yet, but I will in the near future.
Okay. Well, I, I just thought that since they're, they're thinking of putting a park there, that, that, that may be an ideal place for, for the folks that asked for this first. That's all. Okay. Do I, do we have phone calls before I take comments?
Madam Mayor, I do not have phone calls for this item.
Okay. All right. My colleagues, who would like to speak on this item?
Me.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Agajanian, council member, please.
I just want to ask, is this, the dog parks will be fenced, obviously, correct?
Yes.
And the dog owner is going to go inside this fenced area?
Yes, dog owners will go in the fenced area.
Now, so some of these dogs will be big dogs. So if the dogs bites one of the people who brought his dog or her dog to that place, then who's responsible for it? Maybe I have to ask Mr. Garcia, what will happen then? They're going to come back and sue us? How this going to work?
Members of council, Councilmember Agajanian, the, the answer is, you know, it's a little complicated. I know there is some special legislation that was considered to provide some additional immunities for dog parks, specifically if they're designed in accordance with safe standards, something we would look at if we get down, further down the road. And I would tell you, generally speaking, we're not, if the, the conditions of that are provided are safe, the city should not normally be held liable in such a situation.
Okay. Now, the next issue I have, this Pelencani Park, is one of the smallest parks we have. To take a portion of it off this park, because I know lots of elderly, they are going there. And this is kind of a busy park. This is in relation to, at least, to next two other parks, doesn't have much of a space. And to take away some of the area from Pelencani, I think it's going to cause problems. Like Camino San Rafael, there is big space we have there. Or Brand Park is a giant park. In Pelencani, there, I don't know, how do you corner off this dog space? So what's going to be, what will be left for, from the park?
Mayor Devine, Councilmember Agajanian, the south end of the park is about half an acre. So right above the area, we have the playground, and then we have additional open space, and then we have the baseball, baseball field. So it is a larger park, a community park, neighborhood park. So the south end of the park that we're using is the end that is not fully used by picnickers and residents.
And I, I will add to Mr. Bolanikian's comments. It's probably the park that I visit the most, because it's a few blocks from where we live. And I can tell you, as, my experience is not anecdotal, I could literally write a research paper on the attendance levels. The fact that that park ends at that odd angle, you can call it like an anvil-type configuration, none of that area is used. You can go there at any time. You can throw a football. You can throw a frisbee. We're not, we're the only ones there. What it does have on either side is a lot of traffic, traffic zipping up and down to get to San Fernando or to Glen Oaks. Having it fenced off and used as a dog park would probably be a better use, because then you have the area above between the kids' playground, leading up to the field, which is an adequate space with some pretty mature trees with a lot of shade. So it's not a very busy park. It's quite the contrary. It's, it's as busy as, I guess, a lot of our parks, but that, as you get down to that tip, there is hardly any use.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Any other comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah. I mean, first of all, I've recently, in the last, I don't know, few months, become very familiar with the dog parks in this area, because I've been caretaking my kid's dog. And it's very possible that I will end up owning that dog, because they've moved to New York and, and may, may want to leave the, the dog with dad. So I have visited all, you know, the, I go to the Crescent Valley Dog Park almost every day in the evening. And that's a, that's a wonderful, wonderful park. And I think it's technically in Glendale, but it's managed by the county, right?
The county is physically in.
It's physically in Glendale. The Glendale part of Lockres Center, but it's managed by the county. But, you know, and so that gives people up there, you know, easy access. I'm in Verdugo Woodlands. It takes me maybe 10 minutes to get there. So that's pretty good. But, you know, I do think that in, you know, in South Glendale, or Pelencani is, you know, maybe a cousin to South Glendale. It's pretty close. It is really where we need something. One person wrote, probably to all of us, and mentioned, you know, there's this park at, dog park at Griffith, right near the, the zoo. And that's really not a very nice park. I, I mean, I wouldn't take my dog to that park. You've got the five freeways zipping by. You've, it's, it's just packed dirt. It's really not a quality dog park. The one in Eagle Rock is not bad. It's a very small one. And I don't know if you've checked to see what the, what's the size of that one?
It's .9 acres.
Point nine?
Point nine, yeah.
Point nine?
A little bit bigger than ours. Ours is half an acre.
That one's, oh, really? Because that one's small. And point nine is?
It's got pathways, though, and other amenities.
It's in a bowl. So it's got some, maybe it's got some not very usable areas surrounding it. But I, I would note with that one, they don't separate large and small dogs. It's just one. And I don't know that, that they've had any problems. I mean, I never did a, a formal survey. But I don't think it's absolutely necessary that you have two enclosures. It's nice. I don't think it's absolutely necessary. But, um, yeah, I, I think, you know, a city the size of Glendale to not have a single dog park, you know, with the exception of the one in, in Lockres Center, but where the population is, a lot of the population in South Glendale, you know, we really should have something. So I want to do it. I, I really don't know Pelencani Park, so I'll, you know, have to defer to Councilmember Kusakian and you, Mr. Bolanikian, as to whether that, that works. The parking lot that Councilmember Kusakian mentioned, is that Lot 11?
Lot 11, yes.
That's Lot 11? Okay.
Yes. We did take, Mayor Devine, members of the council, we did take a report to the Parks Commission last month on all the city-owned parking lots and open spaces that we oversee. And they asked staff to bring back a report on Lot number 11, parking lot number 11, to see if we can, what we can use that lot for in terms of parks or open space.
I mean, that's an interesting idea. So, I mean, I guess what I would say is, I'm in favor of doing something. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I think the location of Pelencani Park is pretty good. I'll leave it up to others to decide whether it's really the best location. But if we can also look at that Lot 11, I'm, I'd be interested in that as well. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Just briefly, I, I support Pelencani based on its geographic location, and as Mr. Kusakian said, the irregular shape of it. So we're not going to be taking soccer fields or practice space away from kids. And as long as the residents of the community support it, I would support it also.
Yes. I second.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I agree. I agree with what everyone has said. I think that Lot 11, if the people, if the residents in Pelencani are dead set against this, I mean, if you get a lot of pushback, I mean, I think it's worth investigating, looking at Lot 11. But I guess, let's, let's look at Pelencani. I thought perhaps it would be too close to the Griffith Park, Dog Park, to, you know, to have them that close together. But as I understand it, they aren't that close together, relatively speaking.
I mean, Madam Mayor, that, they're, they're close together, but, yeah.
It's hard to get to. It's over the tracks.
It's very close together, but, and, and it's just not a quality, not a quality location.
So I think that we've taken the Santa Rafael location off your plate, as well as it sounds like there was not much interest for anything up at Brand Park. But we've added potentially two more locations for you to study.
We'll be looking at Pelencani and Lot 11.
And, and possibly if there's any interest by the community college to do the Garfield Campus.
And, and Mr. Bolanikian, how much did you tell me it would possibly cost to convert Pelencani into a, part of it anyway, to a dog park? Was that $300,000 to $400,000?
Little upwards of $400,000, yes.
$400,000.
Lot 11 will probably be a little more, because we would need to excavate the concrete and add irrigation and turf and so on. But I won't have the final numbers until we get a consultant on board.
Okay. Okay. Well, this was one idea that wasn't brought forward a few years back to use our parks for a dog park. But I would say if the community and the residents are, are in favor of it, to, to, to investigate, to go ahead and do your outreach. And I agree with my, my colleagues. So therefore, let's see, do we need a motion on this to, for, for staff to go ahead and look into and explore the feasibility of a dog park, let's say, at Pelencani?
Yes, Mayor.
I'll make that motion for the three locations that we discussed.
So it was all for a look at all three locations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was just for the two, Pelencani and Lot 11.
And, and Garfield Campus for your suggestion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay. That's good. Thank you for remembering that, Councilmember Kusakian. Okay. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you all. All the dogs will be happy, and the dog owners. Okay. Next item, please?
Community Development Regarding Update on Recently Enacted State Planning, Zoning, and Housing Legislation Effective January 1, 2022, Including Senate Bill 9 and Consideration of Interim Urgency Ordinance Option. One Motion to Initiate Preparation of Interim Urgency Ordinance Effective January 1, 2022 Regarding Senate Bill 9, Project Objective Zoning Subdivision and Design Standards. Two Motion to Initiate Amendments to Title 16 and 30 Related to SB 9 and SB 478 Project Standards.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Devine, members of city council, as you know, several important and significant planning, zoning, and housing laws will go into effect January 1 of next year, 2022. But most significant of them is SB 9, Senate Bill 9, that has generated a great deal of discussion on state and various local levels. I'm going to turn it over to Kristen Asp, our principal planner, to provide the presentation on this item, ably assisted by Yvette Nukian of the City Attorney's Office.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Galanian said, this is an update on recent legislation. This report will cover an update on SB 8, SB 9, SB 10, and SB 478. As mentioned previously, the most significant being SB 9, which is two in a lot, and lot splits, which I'll cover later in the presentation in more detail. But I will cover 810 and 478 briefly. SB 8 extends the Housing Crisis Act through 2030. The Housing Crisis Act was enacted in 2019 to jumpstart more housing production by streamlining the approval process for housing projects. It was originally set to sunset in 2025, but this extends it to 2030. Additionally, it provides some clarification for a few points by defining affordable housing projects as that those apply to projects with recorded affordability restrictions of at least 55 years. Additionally, clarifies no net loss in a residential, residential capacity provisions by defining concurrently, meaning that if an area of the city proposes a reduction in land use activity related to housing, that an equivalent increase elsewhere in the city has to occur at the same time. And finally, that an appeal hearing counts in the overall limit of five for the hearing limit. Next is SB 10. This is a voluntary process. The city is not obligated to participate in SB 10. process. The city is not obligated to participate in SB 10, uh, which is to streamline the upzoning of any parcel to allow for 10 units when it's near transit or is considered urban infill. Um, by making it, by making the necessary zone change in general plan amendment that we need to go along with upzoning, uh, for those 10 units to not be considered a project under SEQA. Um, again, SB 10 is voluntary. SB 478, uh, you can kind of think of as the floor area ratio bill. Uh, it is, uh, it applies to multifamily proposals between three and 10 units and only in multifamily and mixed-use zones. This prohibit prohibits the city from imposing a FAR floor area ratio of less than, uh, 1.0 for three to seven units and less than 1.25 for eight to 10 units. Um, again, this is, uh, only in multifamily and mixed-use zones. It is not, uh, not applicable to single-family zones or in historic districts. Now, moving on to SB 9. Uh, this is called the, the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Act, or HOM. Uh, it applies to single-family zones only and requires ministerial approval of either two-on-a-lot or a two-lot subdivision. Both of these provisions can potentially be combined. That would result in up to four units on what was formerly a single lot. Uh, SB 9 provisions are not subject to SEQA, and as I mentioned earlier, it's a ministerial approval. So, that means that there is no discretionary design review hearings allowed. So, sticking with the two-on-a-lot provision first, um, this, uh, SB 9 applies to any, any, with any, any city or any urbanized area, which Glendale is. Uh, SB 9 is not applicable, uh, to any sensitive areas. A sensitive area would include things like a flood zone, an earthquake fault zone, or a high fire zone. However, of course, this comes with exceptions. Um, with respect to those, to these sensitive areas, very high fire hazard severity and earthquake fault zones, um, exceptions exist for sites where local jurisdictions ha, uh, have adopted fire hazard mitigation measures, or if development complies with seismic protections adopted by the local building department. So, even though there are areas in Glendale that, that are identified on the Department of Forestry and Fire Prevention maps as high or very high fire hazard zones, Glendale has adopted the applicable mitigation measures, making these sites eligible for SB 9. Uh, there can be no demolition or alteration of an existing family house or existing unit if it is restricted affordable housing, if it is subject to rent control, or if the unit has been occupied by a tenant within the last three years. A property is not eligible for SB 9, uh, if, 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 if the site was withdrawn from the rental market within the past 15 years. Any demolition associated with an SB 9 project is limited to 25% unless a, the local ordinance, unless the city allows for more, um, or there has not been a tenant in the unit within the last three years. Uh, and SB 9, uh, provisions are not applicable to, um, any, any property that is within a historic district, on the California Historical Resources inventory, or listed as a city-county landmark, historic property, or district. Uh, provisions of SB 9 allow jurisdictions to create and apply, uh, objective zoning, subdivision, and design review standards, as long as they allow a minimum of 800 square feet for each unit. Cities are also allowed to require a four-foot minimum interior setback, as well as require one parking space per dwelling unit. However, that parking, uh, parking may not be required if the property is located within a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor, high-quality major transit stop, or within one block of car share. A local agency, uh, local jurisdictions, uh, may also prohibit short-term rentals, meaning that any, uh, any SB 9 project, any rental of it, uh, must be for a term of longer than 30 days. Um, now, in regards to the two-on-a-lot provision with respect to ADUs and junior ADUs, the law is silent on whether they count as one of the, one of the two units. Uh, however, but staff recommends that the city treat ADUs and JADUs as one of the units that's consistent with the, the other portion of the S, of SB 9, which is the lot splits, uh, which I'll get into next. So, the second half of the provision of SB 9 relates to lot splits, basically a parcel map to create two lots. These could be sold separately. Um, obviously, the, the, the lot split must be for residential use. The lot has to be, um, a minimum of 40% of the original lot, but no less than 1,200 square feet in size. Uh, once, uh, once a lot or a property has used SB 9 to split, you cannot split those lots again. And subsequently, no split is allowed on adjacent lots if owned by the same owner or for somebody who, or with somebody who is working in concert with, uh, with the owner of a lot used to be split. Uh, in the lot split provisions, a city is, uh, is, cannot require any right-of-way dedication or off-site improvements. These would be things like curb, gutter, sidewalk. Uh, lot split is required to have owner occupa, owner occupation of one of the units for three years. Uh, this is a signed affidavit of intent to occupy one of the units as a residence for three years. City may not require, uh, is not allowed to require correction of any existing non-conforming zoning conditions that may exist at the time of using SB 9. Uh, each resulting lot is not allowed to, not, not allowed to have more than two units. Uh, but the, the city is allowed to require easements and access to the, uh, to the right-of-way when using a lot split provision. This is just a general SB 9 summary table, um, that summarizes, uh, the slides I just covered. Um, uh, the first column talks about adding units on existing lot. The middle column, just if you're going to do a lot split. And the third column is if you're going to combine units and lot split. So, now, moving on to objective standard, uh, suggestions. As I mentioned, um, there is no design review, uh, associated with SB 9, so, uh, we are allowed to come up with objective zoning, design review, and subdivision standards. Uh, these next two slides just, um, sort of start the conversation of some suggestions. And to consider the first unit as large as, uh, the existing floor area ratio permits. Limit the second unit to 800 square feet max. Uh, we could write some provisions related to shared driveways to minimize the number of curb cuts, uh, that may occur. Address drainage standards. Um, any standards for a second unit with an existing ADU or JADU, but probably want to clarify first the total number of units, uh, for any existing or future ADUs. Um, if council does not want to include ADUs as the second unit, uh, for the two-on-the-lot provisions. And related a little bit, these are focused a little bit more towards design review. But again, as, because no design review is allowed, the challenge lies in trying to codify a number of different scenarios related to, to SB 9 units or SB 9 projects. Is it just adding one unit to an existing property with an existing house? Is it demolition and building two new? Is it a vacant lot and you're building two new, uh, units using SB 9? But we can look at things like heightened stories. Um, limit, limit the, uh, SB 9 unit to, uh, one story, uh, similar to ADUs with a maximum height of maybe 15 or 16 feet. Setbacks, um, we're allowed to, to require at least a minimum of four-foot interior setback. But we can also, uh, look at, um, defining things of required roof form, uh, where the, the SB 9 unit is located. Make sure that it's outside of front and street-side setbacks. Limit things like the size of balconies, porches, patios, where the front doors are placed, the minimum number of cladding materials, uh, for a project, uh, things like windows, um, whether they're, you know, all required to be recessed with sills, things like that. So, I'm going to now turn it over to, um, Ms. Nukian for the final slides.
Thank you, Ms. Asp. So, with respect to design review, I just wanted to cover this slide because it's, it's predominantly a, a legal issue. So, SB 9 states that in the beginning of, of the legislation, that a proposed housing development containing no more than two residential units shall be considered mysterially without, um, thank you, uh, without discretionary review or hearing. So, if you look at the literal wording of SB 9, um, discretionary, it seems to imply that discretionary design review can no longer be performed on one single home. Um, this does seem contrary to the intent of SB 9, which was only to, uh, prohibit cities from doing such design review on two-on-a-lots. Um, so, we completely acknowledge that this is contrary to the intent, but we are, um, sort of looking at the plain language. So, if the council wishes to, um, continue requiring design review on single homes, um, you know, there's, there's an open question legally whether that's still allowed. But going forward with that, you'd also have to consider the policy issue of requiring design review on a single home versus not for two homes may encourage people to do two-on-a-lot as opposed to a single home. And finally, the last slide, which are the alternatives for tonight. So, we are recommending, staffs recommending, an interim urgency ordinance to, um, adopt some standards, which would go into effect January 1, and would, we would have to come back after 45 days to extend that if the council wishes. The other option would be to, um, initiate a, uh, code, code amendment, which would be codified in Title 16 and Title 30, which would require staff to spend a little bit more time drafting, taking to the planning commission. It would take 30 days to take effect and would leave the city potentially without SB 9 objective standards for, um, a little while, while the state law is in effect after January. And of course, any other alternative, um, now presented by staff, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Questions? I don't hear any.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I think we have a few folks, but I'll let Councilmember Bragg.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so much to unpack.
Councilmember Bragg?
So much to unpack here. But let me just start, well, um, yeah, one, one thing I wanted, I wanted to talk about is this, um, owner occupation requirement and, um, what we're able to do to, um, make sure that, you know, people that do lot splits are conforming to that or complying with that undertaking. Because I think that, that's a critical piece that was added to the legislation that really could be pretty powerful in, in making sure that we don't get a bunch of, you know, Wall Street developers to come in and buy properties and do splits. So, can we really hold people to that?
Well, Councilmember Braggman and members of the council, that's a, that's a good question. Because again, I have to go back to the literal wording of the, of the statute, which says intent, you know, intent to occupy for three years. Um, certainly, um, I think we can go a little bit further and have them sign an affidavit, um, saying that they will do that. But I see some problems with, um, enforcement. But, you know, it's the same issue that came up with ADUs. Uh, we have people signing covenants currently for ADUs, um, with some, um, or at least we did in the past when the owner occupancy requirement was present. And now I think it's just JADUs. Um, but in any case, we have some enforcement mechanisms in that covenant that we could also use for the SB 9 covenant slash affidavit if council so chooses.
Okay. So, I would, I mean, I would propose that we do as much as we can. And, um, since this is a gray area, I would say we err on the side of being more, um, demanding in terms of what we require, whether it's somehow we tie it to the certificate, certificate of occupancy, or, or we have, you know, covenants, or I think we really want to make sure that people aren't just saying, "Oh, I intend to stay there." And then the next week, they say, "Oh, well, you know, I need to take care of my relatives in another state. I'm going to leave," right? We, we want it, we, I, I think that's important. Um, I, um, as far as the, the unit size, I mean, we, we could say, I think, I, I think this is correct. We could say anybody that takes advantage of SB 9, whether it's for two-on-a-lot or it's a split and they do two, I mean, that the maximum size is 800 square feet. We could just...
That, that's our understanding. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And that would, um, that would, that would kind of remove that issue that is at the end where it says, you know, single-family design review. I mean, you say it could encourage people to do two, two homes rather than one. But it wouldn't because, you know, your choice, right now, you can build an ADU that's 800 square feet, right? So, if you have a single-family home and you want to build an ADU that's 800 square feet, you can. If you want to take advantage of SB 9 and not have to go through design review, then you, you, you build two 800-square-foot prop, homes, right?
Yes.
And if somebody really wants to do that, okay. But if they want, like, a full-size, you know, house and, and the, and the second one, I mean, that's what we have today with the ADU law, right? So...
Yes.
So, my suggestion would be is we just, you know, where we can, we, we kind of have things so that we, we are giving up as little, you know, of our local control as possible. I would say we, we hold them to 800 square feet. Um, and we keep single, you know, we keep, keep the requirement for design review for single-family homes. That would be, that would be my suggestion. I don't know if you want, um, Madam Mayor, do you want me to go through all these points, or do you want to take it, take these issues one by one? Or how do you want to?
And do you have any callers?
Do you have que, this is for the, for questions, and then we can discuss after we hear the phone calls.
Okay.
So, if you have questions?
Okay. I have, yeah, I have two that purely questions. One is, um, could you address how impact fees work under SB 9? And then the other one is with the historic resources. So, you know, we have potentially historic resources identified in our South Glendale plan, and we're doing the East-West plan. Is there something we can do to make sure that those potentially historic resources are maybe entered into, into some register or something so that they're not subject to SB 9? Those are my two questions.
Okay. I can take the historic one first. Um, so, SB 9 exempts property included on the state Historic Resources Inventory, and that's as defined in a section of the Public Resources Code 5020.1. And so, the state Historic Resources Inventory is defined as the compilation of all identified, evaluated, and determined historic resources, um, specifically those resources evaluated and historic or resource surveyed. But they have to be formally determined, eligible for, or listed in the National Register, or designated as a landmark or point of interest. So, our conclusion is that SB 9 in refer, in referencing the Public Resources Code, um, really only protects, um, those properties on the state, um, inventory that are, uh, listed, um, designated, uh, local register, national register, um, and those that are determined eligible for listing. So, all, in addition to the ones that are listed, in addition to the ones that, um, are listed on the Glendale Register or the State Register or the federal, there are certain ones that might have been surveyed that are determined to be eligible for listing. Um, and those properties, um, are eligible for this protection. Um, the survey that we sent, for example, when we did the South Glendale Community Plan and the survey that we, we did in connection to that, we did send to the state for inclusion in the state inventory. Um, we have not officially received word back yet that that's officially been entered, but, uh, we think that it's very likely that it has. They have a bit of a backlog. Um, so, those properties, as long as those properties were, uh, determined, they get, they, each property is given a status code. And as long as that status code said it was eligible for listing, that property would be ineligible to be developed as an SB 9 project.
Okay. So, that's good news. And we could do the same with the East-West. I mean, we have to go through and do that.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe that might make us want to accelerate that a little bit. But, okay. I think those are, those are my questions for now.
And you had another question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it was impact fees.
Yes. So, impact fees, um, if you recall with AD, well, I don't believe Councilmember Braggman, you were here for that. But with, when ADUs, um, first came out, Glendale adopted, um, discharged, uh, people, the regular impact fee, or maybe it was a little reduced, but it was almost the full impact fee. Um, and then the legislature came out with, um, a bill that capped the city's ability to charge such high impact fees. And so, the council voted to exempt, um, well, actually, the state mandated that the city exempt any ADUs under 750 square feet from any impact fees. And then anything over that would be proportionally related to the main house. So, under SB 9, though, there is no such provision. In fact, there's no mention of development impact fees. So, um, our... So, our assessment as of this moment is that the city could potentially charge a development impact fee that was, you know, reasonably related to the impact. And it would have to be supported by the development impact fee study. So, we, we could look at that when we come back.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
And I would note, we do have, currently have an impact fee for multifamily dwelling units. So, absent anything else, we would apply that. And but we're, as Yvette mentioned, we would be reviewing that to see whether or not this, the fee study that we did is applicable to these units.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman. Councilmember?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Councilmember Kusakian?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I do not have any calls for this, this item.
You do not?
I do not, no.
Wow, okay. Councilmember Kusakian, Najarian, Agajanian?
Madam Mayor, do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
So, a question for staff. I asked this during a briefing as well. So, one of the issues is, obviously, this removes, we're faced here to contemplate adopting the surgency ordinance because not doing so would allow, in the interim, until we come up with things for our own code and outline what is allowed, what isn't allowed, the ability for individuals to propose anything that they want that maybe perhaps doesn't comport in architectural style, design, whatever the case may be, on a property according to state law. Is that correct? And that may have been oversimplification, but.
I think, Councilmember Kusakian, I think your, your question relates to we can't apply any subjective design review standards.
Precisely, okay. So, the issue here becomes, and what I would like to see, I think what a lot of residents would like to see is somehow a character or motif within certain neighborhoods or within our city's profile of homes to be retained and not have this hodgepodge of just because you can build it doesn't mean you necessarily should, but people building it anyways. And I think that during our discussions, I asked, "Well, how can we say that if you have a home of a certain style and you're going to add a second unit, whatever the square footage may be, you know, whether it's 800?" And I agree that we should limit it to that. That it retains the characteristics of the main structure on the lot where it's being built. And staff told me, "Well, we can't do that as you just stated, but we can ask that the materials be the same," correct?
They have to be objective design standards. So, if it is a stucco wall, we can ask for a stucco wall.
Okay, and so, my concern is, and my, what I'd like to see us try and figure out, put our, you know, all of us to put our thinking caps on, staff, council, and just see how can we ensure that we have that continuity of style and look, whatever it may be. And if there's wording that we can incorporate in there that says, "Okay, it can be similar in terms of material or identical or similar," right? Because ultimately, if someone is building an additional unit, ADU or junior ADU on their property, and, you know, they have something that looks craftsman on, on the main lot, it would make sense for them to also have, and I think it would look nice, of course, who am I? But it would, I think, be aesthetically more pleasing to neighbors and more accepting if there was similarity in look. I don't know if I'm overstepping here and how these words will be interpreted, but that would be, I think, what would be most acceptable to people in light of what the state is requiring us to do, which is to allow for the construction of more housing, to remove obstacles. And I don't know how that would be considered an obstacle if all we're saying is, you know, use the same or similar materials within, I don't know, again, I'm, I am not a lawyer and I am not a planner. I am not an urban planner. So, that would be my desire. I don't know how we would do that. Do you have any suggestions?
I mean, I think that, I think you put the, sort of the nail on the head is, you know, how do you define these, these objective standards so that anybody, whether it's the developer, whether it's the planner, whether it's, you know, the actual project owner, can say, "Okay, I can have a roof, I can have a gabled roof." Everybody can look to definition of a gabled roof, see that it's drawn on the plans as a gabled roof, and you sort of check that box. So, we're going to have to go through sort of systematically and kind of craft that language to build those pieces to get something in the aesthetically pleasing world that tries to match.
Yeah, I think that, I think the difficulty, Councilmember Kusakian, is that, that idea of similar or compatible, that's the language that the statute is trying to avoid. But we concerned, if that's, that's the goal that the council has and we would then go back and try to craft some language that encapsulate that, but has it in the language of objective design standards. And I know, as I suggested earlier, as what Ms. Asp said, also, you could have it so that there are diagrams to show a gable roof or a particular type of material so that everybody knows what it is we're talking about.
Sure, and I think that's what most of us would, would like to see. In the very least, I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but it just, to me, makes the most sense. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think I spoke, Madam Mayor, I think I spoke too soon. I did get a caller for this item.
Right, yeah, okay. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is a sad day for Glendale and all the other independent cities in the state of California. And it's sad because the state legislature has decided to usurp our zoning and police powers by dictating to us how and when and where we're going to permit development. And it is a pretty much the end of the single-family residents' neighborhoods. A few exceptions, as staff has pointed out. But this is probably the most devastating series of bills that has come out of Sacramento ever from the standpoint of city and municipal governments. They're basically telling us what we, what we need to do. I am concerned that this will obliterate a design review for homes. If you have a house, you buy, you know, one of those old fixer-uppers and you decide to scrape it and build a new house and a ADU behind it, it looks like the language in SB 9 says you can't, you can't have design review, as you pointed out. And I think it is going to be taken literally because that's how you have to take laws that are written. You have to take them literally. So, everything that we've done as a city over the last 100 years in terms of trying to make homes and neighborhoods compatible and have the proper density and the proper feel are just completely wiped out. And I don't know if the, if the residents are aware of this. I know we've got several emails, but clearly not as many emails as we do for things like, I don't know, you know, like the type of trees we should put in, in town. This is going to kill us. So, I think to the extent we can, I hate to use the word "fight," but fight back, I think we should adopt standards in an interim ordinance that take place, take in effect January 1, and figure out how we can somehow gain control. But, look, I mean, we can sugarcoat this. It's game over for trying to protect your neighborhoods. There aren't going to be any single-family neighborhoods anymore. There's going to be tons of construction, cars overflowing in the street, one lot being split into two lots and each lot having two homes on it. It's very, it's very depressing to me. But, you know, we can try and rearrange the deck chairs and say, "Okay, well, we can have restrictions on gable roofs. Gable roofs have to be consistent and these objective standards." But when you boil it all down, it's going to be deemed to be violative of SB 9. And the, they're going to say what you're doing is making a discretionary review. And we'll be in litigation, and it stinks. I'm very unhappy about this. I mean, this is probably the worst thing that I've seen in, you know, in the 16 years that I've been on, on city council. Sacramento has just, you know, pulled the rug out from under us and every other city. How many cities? 358 or something in the state of California?
580-something.
500, whatever. It's a shame. I mean, to the extent we can mount a, a feeble comeback or a feeble resistance to their ordinances, I'm all for that. But it's very depressing to me. I don't see anything good about this. I just see everything bad for our city. I'm going to stop there, man.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Asp. Can you go to page 11 on your report?
The staff report or the PowerPoint?
No, the PowerPoint report.
Okay.
See, it says, page 11. It says parcel map to create two lots, okay? Must be for residential use, okay? And further than, one more than, it says minimum 1,200 square feet lot size. So, it means when we split, one of them should not be less than 1,200 square feet, right? The lot size.
Councilmember Agajanian, it means the lot, so the minimum lot size is, is 1,200 square feet.
All right, now we go to the item above it. It says must be for residential use and then says 40% of original lot size. 40% of original. It should be, when you split, should be 40% of it. So, if I have a lot, which there are lots of them in Glendale, and if it's, let's say, 20,000 square feet, so it means when we split, one should not be less than 8,000? Let's assume it's 20,000, so when it's split.
8,000, if 8,000 is 40% of the 20,000, correct.
So, we are telling the person who has a smaller size can do whatever they want. Let's say if my lot is 3,000, the smaller one will be 1,200, okay? If it's 3,000, it will be 1,200. And it matches with the requirement of the law. And if I have a 30,000-square-foot lot, I have divided, will be 12,000 square foot of lot that I can do the same thing as the 3,000 square foot of lot.
These rules apply to, to all sizes of, all sizes of properties. These are just that 1,200 is the minimum.
Yeah, but however, to split it and have 40% of it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know what it means to be 40% because.
I think the idea was that the legislation, I think, says that the split, the lots have, the two lots have to be roughly proportional, but no greater of split than 40/60, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Nice, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. My question is about affordable housing. And there's no component in this bill for affordable housing. Can we mandate that, like, if there are more than two units being built, that one of them has to be affordable? Or is that the reason that we're, we're going to, I mean, if we keep the size to 800 square feet, that would kind of limit the, the rent that they can charge? Is that the, the thinking behind that?
Mayor DeVine and members of the council, we would have to look into that further. I don't know if we could come back fast enough in the interim urgency ordinance for that kind of thing. But we believe that would require possibly amending our inclusionary zoning ordinance or enacting some other regulatory change or ordinance amendment to, to do that. And we're not even sure. We would like a little bit more time to research that question. We're not sure if it's legally supportable at this point.
Okay, and we can limit two housing units to a lot and, and make sure that one of them is, if one of them is an ADU, that counts as one of the units?
Yes, we, we believe that that is supported by the law.
Okay, so that, that's something that I, I would like to see. And also, let's see, I guess those are, those are my questions. Let's hear the caller and then we can make our final remarks and discussions.
Lynn Moses, you have three minutes. Lynn, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Regarding SB 9 and SB 10, the, absolutely correct. This is the most devastating set of bills that I, I have seen in so very long. The state is basically become the state dictatorship over our land use, of local land use. Not all of it, you know, has been good for anybody. For instance, in LA, they keep most of the units, they keep so many, tens of thousands of units off the market. When the councilman last year proposed a ordinance to tax the units that big developers kept off the market and, you know, the, the rest of the council killed it in committee, being held into big developers. Well, that's a local thing that, you know, people are doing incorrectly. But the state has just, he's absolutely correct, totally devastated. And the, the local control, single-family housing is, you know, the potential is catastrophic. So, I would encourage what the gentleman was saying to do everything you can, establish a commission to really study all of the ins and outs and see where we can, to use his words, fight back. We can't lay down on, on this one. We can do whatever we have to do, whatever, whatever we can do. And the public, I'm sure, as he was saying, he brought forth, the, the councilman is very sharp. He brought forth a lot of good points. People don't understand how this is going to impact them until they see, you know, all these units right next to their home, parking, a disaster, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would encourage the council to do, to make this a priority because it's right around the corner and it can devastate us all. Let's please, let's fight back, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's our last only caller?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we will take no more calls. And let's go ahead and, Councilmember Brotman, if you want to go ahead now and bring up all of your points.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, I'll just try to quickly give my point. So, I, I support limiting the two units. Well, let me back up first. I mean, I, I agree with Councilmember Najarian and I'm sure all the rest of us, you know, we don't like to lose our authority to make land use decisions. And it's especially troublesome because Glendale, you know, when you go back to the RENA numbers, the last RENA cycle, Glendale actually built twice as much as the state said we need to build here. Whereas, you know, our neighbors in Burbank, not really wanting to bash them, but our neighbors in Burbank built about 25% of their RENA number. Yet, we don't get any credit for that. And we get kind of painted with the same broad brush by Sacramento. But that's the way it is. So, I agree that we should do, you know, everything we can within the law, obviously, to maintain the control that we, that we still have. So, limiting units to 800 square feet, I would say any unit that's built under SB 9 would be limited to 800 square feet. I would propose that we do not allow ADUs and J-ADUs in addition to the two units on a lot. I would say we maintain discretionary review for single-family homes, maximize the objective design standards. However, you know, staff can, can think about height setback and, and parking to the extent we're able to. Yeah, make sure that that intent to occupy is honored as much as possible. Make sure that we do what we can on our historic. Make sure that we do what we can on our historic, um, uh, surveys so that those potentially historic, uh, properties do get entered and, and do get the protection that, that they need. Uh, charge, you know, the impact fees that are, that are appropriate for that size of, of unit or, you know, number of rooms or whatever, however we do it with, with, uh, with multifamily. That is, yeah, that's, that's my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Kasakian, anything to add?
Uh, no, I, I think I made my comments. Um, I agree that this is part of a, a power grab by our leaders in Sacramento who unfortunately perhaps have forgotten their roots and, um, don't realize that one of the fundamental duties we have as council members is to decide what gets built, where and how, and in our cities. And I've said this time and again, perhaps it bears repeating, that we in Glendale have done more than our fair share of construction, constructing housing of all types, uh, especially affordable. Um, yet we are somehow being lumped in with all the other cities that were derelict in their duties and being punished for, uh, regional shortage of housing. Certainly doesn't make us happy, but again, we have to, I, I, I support staff's recommendations in order to make sure that any damage done to our neighborhoods and the quality of life is, is minimal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes, I just have one item, yes, I, one item I want to mention. I want to make sure that we, um, I mean, come up with a laws, a regulation to make sure that the owner of, whoever splits the lot to occupy, and I don't know what kind of limitation we can come up with to make sure that, uh, really they will reside there. Probably my question is to our attorneys, and if one of them, if they can say, are you gonna make sure that they're gonna reside in there? So the, one of the units is, uh, AD, uh, junior ADU. And they say, um, uh, this is where I live. And then what happens? I'm gonna split, I have three, uh, unit for rent, and the very little one, I say, this is where I'm gonna live. So how are you gonna control?
Well, Councilmember Agajanian and members of the city council, that's, uh, the heart of the question of, you know, how do, you know, how do you enforce, uh, a provision like this? Um, again, the way we do it with ADUs is we have them sign a covenant. The covenant gets recorded. There are mechanisms that kick in if the city discovers and is able to show uh, that the person does not live there at the site. Um, and again, I have to correct myself. That's with JADUs, not ADUs.
I made four units, and then what happens? Because it's done. I have finished the buildings, made it four, and JADU, and they say, I live there, and I don't. Then what you gonna do?
Well, the city has to find out about it. They have to be able to, to prove it somehow. And then we would initiate a proceeding in court to get an injunction, to get a judge to agree with us. There are provisions that kick in also.
Injunction on what? I already made four units. It's built.
You're asking about how do we enforce them living there, correct?
Yeah, yeah. No, beside. After I, I said, I'm gonna live in one of the units for three years. So I make the buildings, four units, ADU and JADU, will be four units, and I say, I'm living in this one. Then I don't come, I will put a bed in there, I say, here where I'm, I'm living, and I don't come afterward.
Councilman Agajanian, and I think in the case of the JADU, what, uh, what Ms. Nukian is saying, it's, there's probably a little more teeth to it. You can even maybe get injunction to prevent that unit from being rented out until the, the, the condition is complied with. The, the problem we're seeing with this statute is that it, it clearly requires the affidavit, uh, but then it also specifically says the city, cities can't, can't require anything more than the affidavit. So we're gonna continue to look at that, see if there's, that, that can be addressed somehow. But that's something we're looking at. And, and as Yvette noted, it's a very good question and something we're struggling with. And we're, we're gonna keep working on it when we bring the item back to you, uh, in December.
Okay. Like you said, uh, balance of it, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Brotman. So with that, I want to move the item based on alternative one. Whenever I can, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Well, it's been a, a good discussion this evening, but, um, the bottom line is with SB nine, uh, you know, it cites that we can adopt objective standards. And, and as long as they don't con, conflict with SB nine. That makes it so ambiguous that it's very difficult. But it's very clear to, I think, all of us, that we have to put conditions on this bill before it goes into effect. And hopefully we can get that done with this, uh, with this ordinance. I, I hope that you will look into the affordable housing component. Uh, limit two hous, two housing units per lot and the ADU counts as a lot. Enforce that occupancy for three years. I don't know, have them sign an affidavit, however you, you figure that one out. Maximum size is eight hundred square feet. That's the only way we're gonna get any affordable housing out of this deal. Uh, look into the impact fees. I think, uh, developers are gonna come in and try to do this, then they should pay their fair share. Uh, adhere to our FAR code when you get a project. Let's see, what else? Require the discretionary DRB on single homes. And, um, you mentioned that, uh, for the DRB, we are able to write standards for height, one-story maximum setbacks, roof form, and where it's located, correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mayor Devine?
According, I thought that you said that according to the SB nine, we can, as a council, affect, uh, DRB standard, height, one-story maximum setbacks, um, roof forms, and where it's located, correct?
Correct. Objective, objective standards related to that.
So I hope, I hope, I don't know how much direction you need from us, but I hope that when you bring this back, that you address, uh, these standards on so that everything is written out and explained, uh, when we, when we receive this. Uh, you know, we have to stop this Sacramento land grab, that's for sure. I want to let, uh, the, um, the caller, uh, that mentioned, you know, agreement, Councilmember Najarian, well, all of us, actually, he put it so well, but, um, please look up, Google, United Neighbors Coalition. Um, it's a statewide coalition and they're trying to, uh, initiate a ballot measure to transfer power from Sacramento to local, to, back to local control. Um, so if you're interested in fighting this, um, maybe you, uh, you should, uh, read up on what they're doing and, and join in the fight. Again, it's called United Neighbors Coalition. And with that, I, I hope, does staff have enough information to move forward on this?
Yeah, they have moved it.
We do.
Okay, so, uh, I will take that motion from, uh, Councilmember Agajanian. Do I have a second?
Just so we're clear, there are two motions. One is to...
One and two.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor, there are two motions, but basically the same item. One is to direct staff to work on the urgency ordinance. The other one is initiating the code, the permanent code amendments that will be studied as part of the, as part of the urgency ordinance.
Okay. So, okay, I move...
So can we take them together?
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes, I move it based on whatever Mr. Garcia said.
And I'll second it.
Move one and two. All right, Mr. Brot, Councilmember Brotman, second it. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you. Very good. Next item, please.
Next item is community development regarding status of the, uh, preservation and reuse of city-owned property located at the former Rockhaven Sanatorium, two seven one three Honolulu Avenue, and direction, uh, direction, unpreferred next step. Motion directing staff, unpreferred next step regarding the preservation reuse of the former Rockhaven Sanatorium located at two seven one three Honolulu Avenue. To motion directing staff to finalize a grant agreement with the California Natural Resources Agency in furtherance of acceptance of the state grant.
Um, Mr. Jimean, can I, Jimean, can I ask you, do we have a caller on this at this moment?
I do not have any callers on this, but I do have two callers waiting for oral communication.
Okay, Mr. Calvert, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Galani.
Yes, no problem. Mayor Devine, members of city council, recently State Senator, uh, Portantino announced that he was able to secure an eight million dollar grant for, uh, to renovate and preserve the Rockhaven property, uh, including a, a museum. Uh, and for that, we are grateful. Uh, this grant has the potential to ke, kickstart, uh, our previous, or our future efforts to preserve this, uh, important property and for council to consider alternatives that may have not been feasible, uh, in the past. And as part of presentation, staff will, uh, will offer four alternatives for council's consideration moving forward. With that, alternative over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, as mentioned, we're seeking direction this evening on the future of the Rockhaven Sanatorium site. Um, as acknowledged, uh, the eight million dollar grant, uh, does create an opportunity for us to create a museum function on the site, but we're also looking for a direction on what else can occur there. Um, just for a little background in history, uh, in nineteen twenty-three, this facility was opened as a, a women's mental health facility. Um, this is one of just a handful left in the country, I believe three, if I am not mistaken. Um, it also made it onto the National Historic Register. Um, so a very significant location, very significant, significant property. Um, this is a sketch of the site plan. Uh, you can see the areas that are shaded brown. Those are buildings with a high historic value, uh, or high historic architectural integrity. Uh, those with the hatch pattern on them were deemed with a low historic architectural integrity. Uh, that includes the building at the front, uh, near the, uh, the entry gate, uh, labeled number, or letter L there, and then buildings A and B up in the northwest corner. Um, the other buildings were deemed to have a high architectural integrity or historic value. Um, there is some, some, uh, essentially unused area to the west, as well as to the south of the property, uh, or along the southern boundary of the property. Um, those areas total approximately sixty-one thousand square feet by our estimates. Uh, the areas shaded in green to the left are approximately, uh, about forty-four thousand, uh, square feet. And then the balance would be that area in the front of the property.
May I ask a question? Madam Mayor? I don't know if she's on mute, but, um, just, what's the blue? The blue box?
Uh, the blue is a GWP.
Oh, okay. Couldn't read that out, okay.
Well, there, I think.
Water well.
The water well.
And where's the parking now? Where, oh, there's a vacant area that could be potentially parking, right?
Correct. There is a circle, or circular drive when you, when you come into the gate off of Honolulu. And there's on-street parking as well around the block. Around the entire block for the most part. Uh, so in two thousand and eight, this property was acquired for eight point two five million dollars. Um, following the recession, city had released an RFQ, uh, to determine what could be possible on the property as well. Uh, that process was later discontinued, um, later on in the year. And an RFP was issued in February of twenty sixteen. Um, as part of this process, the city, uh, engaged in ENA for a commercial center and park on the site. Um, that was ultimately terminated a handful of years later. And then a new one, a new E, ENA was entered into, uh, with Avalon for a boutique hotel that was ultimately terminated in January of twenty twenty. Um, and that brings us to, uh, kind of our current state where we have received that eight million dollar grant. Um, and as well, we'll outline, looking for, um, direction that could revisit some of those, those opportunities. Um, in July of twenty twenty-one, uh, we completed an assessment to, uh, essentially try to reverse the deterioration on the site. Uh, that included a one point six million dollar estimate to stabilize and mothball the property, um, really just for the purpose of kind of weather protection and security. To bring this property into kind of a limited public use ability that would entail a much larger scope or, or, or an additional scope, really. Um, that would address building and fire code compliance, things like ADA, abatement, emergency signage and lighting, things of that nature. Uh, that would be about three point two million dollars. Um, that estimate for the limited public, public use really represents kind of a floor to bring those buildings, um, back into a usable condition, but would still trigger additional improvements and costs that would need to be done. Um, this site has had ad hoc mothballing for about fifteen years, lacking really those kind of more permanent safeguards to, to protect the integrity of those, those structures. Um, staff, will we seek an authorization to complete a roof replacement and got a repair to aid in the weatherproofing of this building, that, of, of the buildings that have been identified with a high historic integrity? As mentioned, in June twenty twenty-one, Senator, Senator Anthony Portantino announced a securement of eight million dollars for the Rockhaven Preservation. Um, this was for the purpose to renovate, um, for public enjoyment and to appreciate a museum element that would be on site. Um, the center's office indicated flexibility in these funds, um, but they are intended to preserve the site and incorporate that museum component. So any of the alternatives that we discuss, uh, this evening should include that museum component in order to continue, um, securement of that grant. Uh, the grant is reimbursement-based, though advances can be requested for cash flow purposes. State is confirming grant can be used for a wide range of preservation. So that could include security, site improvements, building renovation, or other uses on the site. So this grant has the potential to kickstart the city's preservation efforts and to consider alternatives that maybe were not feasible before. Um, each option, as we mentioned, there are four to kind of start as a conversation point with city council, should include that museum component, otherwise the city would forego that grant. The first op, option is to look at the site, um, as an opportunity for park or community assets or, uh, community facilities along with that museum. Um, we've, uh, had conversations before, could this, this be a public space, a library space, a community center, fire station, things of those natures, of, of those nature? And that would include the, the renovation of Fire Station Twenty-nine. Um, this option would create a new ongoing financial obligation for the city, so that should be recognized and acknowledged as part of this process. Option two would be to develop the site, uh, with commercial opportunities as well as a park. And that would include finding tenants for those buildings that may not be used for a museum, uh, purpose. Staff has visited, visited the site, uh, to try to identify which buildings may be appropriate for a museum facility based on its size, uh, some of its existing ADA accessibility as well. Um, but the balance of those buildings could be used, uh, for commercial tenancy. Um, this would be a similar approach to option one, uh, but the buildings would not, uh, but the buildings would be available for private use. Um, the city would serve as a landlord and property manager to generate revenue, offset development and operation costs. Um, and a portion of the site, again, would still be set aside, uh, for the museum. Option three would be entertain, entertain a non-exclusive discussion with interested parties. Uh, as part of your packet, there is a list of interested parties throughout the RFQ and RFP processes, as well as those that have reached out to us, uh, in, in more recent years, is still expressing their interest in the site. Uh, the city could engage negotiations with any of those parties per the direction of council. Um, the interest was high prior to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, uh, so that is something we could re-engage with, with any of those that are listed. Again, a portion of the site being set aside for a museum. And then option four would be to the release an RFP or an RFQ seeking, uh, a specific private, private sector development. That, that could include anything from affordable housing, um, assisted living and medical uses. Some of these are, are ones that the city has been approached about before. Um, boutique lifestyle center, a small office, or a low-density, low-impact kind of passive use that would match the aesthetic quality, uh, of the museum and the surrounding context. Uh, the proposals, again, would be subject to including, uh, that museum facility on site. And those four options are really intended to start a, a kind of conversation with council as we seek direction on, on which of those four, uh, council may wish for us to pursue. Uh, that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Calvert, for the, uh, the work that you've done on this and for the, uh, the report this evening. But at this moment, uh, we have a special, uh, speaker on the phone. So shall we go to the phones?
Senator Portantino? Senator Portantino, can you? Yes, go ahead.
Great, it's great to be here and what a very thorough presentation. I really appreciate that from staff. And I really appreciate the, the drilling down on the cost to, to renovate, uh, how doable that is. And I think this is an exciting pros, prospect for the city. And, uh, I know how important it is and how much you've all put in over the last, since you've acquired the property, how much time and energy and, and opportunity that you, uh, invested and was pleased to, to facilitate the grant. And, uh, uh, for the council, staff has been talking to me since I announced the grant on flexibility and, you know, it, it, it's a pretty broad definition in the state budget of, uh, creating this public opportunity. And so looking forward to working with all of you and touring the property. forward to working with all of you and touring the property and, and seeing the exciting plans that you have for this. And if you have any questions, I'll, I'll stay on the line for the rest of the conversation. But I just appreciate how much effort that your staff and you have all put in over the years to, to preserve this jewel of, of the foothills and this important piece of history, in particular in, in women's health. As we know, the founder was 100 years ahead of her time. And that should be preserved and appreciated for, for generations. And as the father of two daughters, I'm particularly pleased at the opportunity to, to see this blossom into a public use and, and to appreciate the role that women in healthcare have had for, for the city of Glendale. So thanks for letting me say a few words.
Absolutely. We, well, I know, I want to thank you, Senator Portantino, for giving us the opportunity to, to create a unique and special place here at Rockhaven and, and bring it back to the jewel that it once was. I would like, would my colleagues like to say anything to the senator now?
I would just like to say thank you, Senator. Certainly, your efforts, not just on this, but on a number of issues, are greatly appreciated. And on this one in particular, we are excited to use these funds to achieve the intended goals for when we initially purchased the parcel and the property. Thank you very much.
And, and for me, Senator Portantino, equal comment. Thank you very much. This is a real game changer for us, and it, it'll allow us to really kind of control our own destiny. So very much appreciated.
Here too, Senator. Thank you for the, the funding. And we appreciate your leadership in the state senate. And invite you down for the ribbon cutting, whatever this turns out to be.
Absolutely. And I, I know we've also reached out to staff to have a little celebratory lunch on the property. I know we're working, Art is working with, with the city manager's office on finding a date where we can have a, you know, go sit and tour and invite, you know, have friends of Rockhaven there and the city council. And lunch would, you know, lunch would be on me. So I, I look forward to, to having that opportunity on-site as well.
Hey, Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you, Senator Portantino, for securing $8 million. But I just, Senator referred to that, he said he's happy that the cost of some repairs or renovation is not that high. Did you say, Senator, based on that $3 million?
Yes, the $3 million is, is certainly less than half of $8 million. So
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know what staff was going to say. So I, I like that number.
I like to, but later, when I asked, with $8 million, we can fix it, I was told this is going to be more than $8 million. Is that true, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Divine Member City Council, Councilmember Agajanian, depending on the, one of the alternatives that Mr. Calvert presented to council, depending which alternative council desires to move forward with, there, there is a high likelihood that we're going to need to inject additional funding above and beyond the $8 million that Senator Portantino has secured for us.
Okay. Senator, so we need your help again. So I just wanted to bring to your attention, however, it could be worse if you wouldn't secure this $8 million. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. I, I'll, I'll quote the Indiana Jones movie when he was picking the chalice and they said, "Choose wisely." So you, you have a gamut of, of options from staff, so choose wisely.
Okay. All right, we try.
Yeah, we have to stay within our budget.
Yeah.
Okay, comments, questions from council?
Comment. Do, do, Madam, you want to go to the phone call?
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on the line for the signing.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Hopefully, it's Friends of Rockhaven. Okay. Let's hear it.
Joanne Linkhorst, you, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Joanne.
I, okay, so I'm, I'm a little bit of a mess here because this is eight years of my life and 13 years of the Crescent Valley waiting for an opportunity like this and how remarkable, how exciting tonight is. And we just want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and I still love saying that, and councilmen for, for reaching this point. It's, it's just remarkable. It's so exciting and, and, and we are absolutely thrilled. Tonight is actually my birthday, and I have been spending my birthday listening to the council meeting because you guys are about to give me the best birthday present I could imagine getting.
Well, great. We're happy for you, Joanna. You've worked very hard for this, I have to say. So let's, let's see what council has to say, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone.
Absolutely. Okay, let's see where we're going with this. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Najarian?
Well, okay, so let's start with the, the low-hanging fruit here, and that is that we do have to maintain a, a museum component in the, in the development. So that's, I think that's a given. The senator earlier told me that everything else is very flexible, though, the funding in terms of what we want to do. I would like to see some, I would like to see preservation of open space, especially near the oak groves. I would like to see some sort of retail in there, whether it's a coffee shop. And I'm not saying put this out for RFP, because Lord knows, we've tried that four times, and it just, it just hasn't worked out. Some, some basic amenities in there, whether it's a coffee shop or a, a tea room or something very appropriate. I don't even want to limit those choices to that. There should be some room for the community, whether it's, someone was talking about a scout meeting room or maybe a community meeting room. Other than that, I'm, you know, I'm, I don't have any set, I mean, all the other ideas that, that we had thought failed. You know, we wanted to, we wanted to have a, a large retail center, failed. We wanted to have a boutique hotel, failed. So we don't want to go down that route again. I think we do have to be mindful of our budget here. So whatever we decide, we need to do a budget. I'm not sure about the wholesale transplanting of our public library to Rockhaven. I think that's going to be a very extensive project. I might be wrong, but I think that's going to be very large, even though it would free up room for the fire department across the street. I'm, you know, other than that, I'm, I'm ready to, to get working. I think this money gives us what we needed to do, to secure the buildings and to at least begin to incorporate some of the thoughts we've all had. When I say we, not just council, but the, the community as well, and just get going on this. I think we need to be thoughtful, sensitive, cost-conscious, and, you know, take it, take it one step at a time. So I'm, that's, that's where I'm, I'm at, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
Well, Councilmember Agajanian had his hand up before I did, so I'll defer to him, and then I'll go after Councilmember Agajanian.
Thank you. We went through this project before. Ms. Divine, you remember with Mr. Najarian. So we went through this, and we had some ideas for the museum as the money Senator Portantino brought to us, which, as I said, we appreciate what he has done here. But I would like, we went through this before, and we discussed that, if we can go to page three, please, on the, on the report? Yes, PowerPoint presentation, page three. Page three. So, okay. And we had plans for that green area where, yeah, it's green area, which is, I think, was like 44,000 square feet of land. That area is somewhere, I remember, was 40, 40, 44,000 square feet of land. And we had the plan of having some affordable housing in that area. So I would like to see that the, the idea of museum to be followed and see what we can do. And in that area of green zone, to have affordable housing, as we discussed this for, and discussed this, we went through it, and we did, at that time, I guess, they were in favor of it, my council colleagues, they were in favor of it. So I want to look at that, that it's mentioned in option four, basically. So to follow that route. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
All right, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you. I would just like to say that we have an incredible opportunity here before us. We've had it for some time, but for a variety of reasons, we have not been able to fully realize what we can and what I believe we should do with the property and for the residents in this part of Glendale. I think myself, when I was city clerk, Councilmember Najarian, and maybe one or two other people in this room were around when this property purchase was initially made. And it was made at possibly, I think, at the height of a market that was about to crash. And then, for many years, the city was saddled with this great outlay of capital that they had spent to acquire this property and then had struggled to find ways to develop it or do something with it. Meanwhile, I believe, and I believe rightfully so, the community's interest up there increasingly grew and raised awareness about the heritage and what this property means to the history of the Crescent Valley. And we find ourselves in a much different place today, in large part thanks to Senator Portantino's efforts to securing these funds. In terms of what I believe that we should do, and I haven't been shy about this, I, I think that there are a number of things that can be done, should be done, and we can do it if we, we want to. If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. First of all, let me start by saying that in the part of the city and in our community where this, where the sanatorium is located, where the library just down the street, I think about .4 miles, less than half a mile away, is located currently, attached to the fire station, it is in a very high-risk fire zone. I see, our fire chief who's here, who's sticking with us through this discussion, nodding his head in agreement. At least, in my lifetime, living here in Glendale, I've seen the hills up there go up in flames twice, the last time being the station fire, which was very serious with multiple evacuations. And it's one of my favorite views in Glendale, seeing the hills. I think the hills, hillsides and mountains are what makes Glendale special. But I can't tell you how many times, in driving up to the north part of the city, I look at those wonderfully lush hills, even on the Oakmont side, and think to myself, when? Just when? And the resources that we have to serve the people of that community, the obligation we have as council people to make sure that they are safe, that we're able to fight fires in a part, in a time in our lives when we're hearing that due to climate change and due to a number of other factors, the risk of that continues to increase with drier seasons, and the, the risk increasing, it is incumbent upon us to do something. So I do believe that we need to have a modernized fire station up there because for the last at least 15 years, if not longer, the fire station that we have up there right now, the one currently across from Trader Joe's, cannot house the equipment needed to adequately respond to an emergency in that part of the city. So the last time we built a new fire station was Fire Station 21. It was completed sometime around 1998, I was told, perhaps 1999. So what do we do with the library? I think the perfect solution has presented itself to us. And it had, and this was part of the initial discussions, was, I think, first of all, relocating the library to the Rockhaven site creates a draw for people to come, visit the library, use community rooms, as Councilmember Najarian suggested as another use, as well as allow people to visit a museum that celebrates the history of women and women leaders in our city and in our region. I don't think that there's any other such museum in, here locally, and I think it would be a perfect location for it. I think the structures there could support it. The setting of it is ideal. It was intended for a place for people to recoup, to recharge, and having a library component ensure, if, you know, we can have a coffee shop or something next to it, and it could sustain it, would be great. I think that we can do both of those. Would it be difficult? Certainly. But I do believe it's necessary. The community deserves it. Our whole city deserves it because there'll be something that'll serve everyone. And by having a library there, again, it becomes an additional reason to have foot traffic to that location, drawing people there. In terms of the other parcels, ultimately, it's going to be about, it's going to come down to the details, how much it'll take, what it will take. I've talked to staff about, in addition to the funding available through the hard work of Senator Portantino, for us to seek additional funding for the upgrade of the fire station, given what, the moment that we're having in the state's history with fires. And I believe that if we work hard enough, if we have the will, we can find it. And I think that we need to make that investment. And I think once we rehabilitate the buildings, it'll be a tremendous community center and library location. So that's what I would like to see in terms of what happens to the adjoining property, if there's room for housing. You know, if that's what it would take to make the reality of preserving Rockhaven accessible to the entire community, I would not be against that. I'm not going to shut the door on that concept, if it's affordable or housing. But ultimately, my priority would be the transfer of the library to this location and also the refurbishing of the fire station down the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. Councilmember Brothman?
Yeah, thank you. So I, first of all, again, want to thank Senator Portantino for securing the funds, and I think it really changes the, the game for us. I, I kind of imagine the place, you know, I imagine, you know, a museum, of course, and, and I think the library, you know, depending on what the cost would be, but that would make sense. And, and I think the, the other structures can be used for things that are revenue generating, such as, I mean, it would be a great place for a restaurant, for a, a tea room, as Councilmember Najarian said, or a coffee shop, or a brew pub, or, you know, any number of things. I would love to see something, it's not only about generating some revenue to, to, to cover the, the maintenance costs so that it's not an ongoing financial burden to the city, but it's, but it's also drawing people there. I mean, it would be so wonderful to go to a restaurant in that setting, to go have a beer in that setting, or whatever it is, you're, you're, you know, it could be, it could be a wine bar. It doesn't have to be beer. You know, I can see spaces for, for events, like an art space, a music dance, maybe people can rent, rent it out for classes. We can have maybe weddings there. A number of things that we can do to generate revenue. So I think what I'm talking about here is alternative two, which is that we would, you know, use the, the funds that we've been given to bring the structures up to, you know, the, the level we need to, to be able to then accommodate various uses. Now, I don't know how far that $8 million will go. I think that's something that staff needs to come back and tell us, you know, beyond this 3.2 million to do the basics, what can we get for $8 million? You know, what, what can we do with the, with the, with the, the property? And it's also about the landscaping because we want to, we want to landscape the grounds, you know, ideally back to some form of, of what they were historically. So if we can, if, if we can do that for $8 million, that's great. If, you know, if we can't complete it, I guess we'll do what we can. That's what I would like to see. And I, I would also, you know, like to see, you know, the Friends of Rockhaven have put so much blood, sweat and tears into this over so many years. I can see, and I, and I think we really I can see, and I, and I think we really should think about a role that they can play. And maybe we don't need a property manager, maybe they can play a role like, I'm afraid to say the words, but, you know, the way Glendale Arts was with the Alex, or the way we have, I think, the Historic Society running the doctor's house. But they are, you know, they're a strong nonprofit. They've got a lot of support in the community. And I think they could be in a great position to, to go out and raise some funds from philanthropic organizations to, to actually maybe do additional capital improvements in this space. So I think they could play a really vital role. They certainly have proven that they, that it matters to them, and they've dedicated so much of their lives to it, not just Joanna, but so many others. So that's kind of the way I would like to go. Take the 8 million, do as much as we can with it, get some revenue generating activities that are, that are kind of compatible with the space, the library, and, and have, you know, have a nonprofit, and I can't think of any better nonprofit than Friends of Rock Haven, to help, you know, to play an ongoing role. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Okay, so finally, thank you, Senator Portantino, again, for enabling us to kickstart this, this effort to, to bring Rock Haven back into the public view and enjoyment. It can be an educational experience. It will, we can restore it to the jewel that it, that it was in the past. My ideas about Rock Haven are that we should keep the property intact, restore the buildings, create a museum and a park. And I, I agree, the first thing, though, I think, having met with the Friends of Rock Haven, I know that their wish is to open it up as soon as possible. And I think that's what our goal should be, to start this project with the main goal of opening Rock Haven to the public, to the Friends of Rock Haven as soon as possible. You know, they're, they are so passionate about this, and I really feel that this is going to be and can be a very special partnership. So if we can, you know, open it up to the public and start, start working on this, get the museum in place, you know, we, we can look at a restaurant, I think it would be lovely to have a restaurant up there. Let's look at, you know, how do we fund Brand Park? We have weddings there, parties, birthday parties. I mean, I think once we, we renovate, I think that could be a good source of revenue, if there is a restaurant there, or we have special occasion events there. I think with the Friends of Rock Haven, with their ability, since they are a nonprofit, they can create new ongoing financial support, and I think they are more, probably more than willing to do that. I know they are, they are so passionate about this, that I think they would, they would be really happy to partner with this, with the city and, and get Rock Haven open to the public and then bring it back to its, its original beauty. When you start saying, putting things in the different bungalows, it takes me back, you know, with seven years ago that I started on this, this Rock Haven journey. What would we do? All of the, the different iterations of development that we went through. And, and here we are at this, this point where we have been given this funding to, to do what, what everyone had, what the residents and Friends of Rock Haven have wanted from the very beginning. And I'm glad that we're all in favor of this, that so people can, residents and people from far and wide can learn about the history of Rock Haven, enjoy the property, just enjoy the property. You know, it's a huge property, it can be just gorgeous. So I'm in favor of number two. I think we should use our funds wisely. Let's stretch those, that 8 million as far as we can. And let's hope that Rock Haven, the Friends of Rock Haven are willing to work with us and get some grants and, and just take it to new heights. So with that.
Madam Mayor.
Do we have any phone, pardon me? Did I hear?
I have a comment. So I'd like to thank.
Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Friends of Rock Haven for their strong advocacy through the years. But it looks like, it sounds like we're throwing a lot of things at them here. We're asking them to be the managers of the property, we're asking them to be the fundraising arm, we're asking them to perhaps do oversight of the property. So I don't want to dump too much on them until we, I know Joanna Linkhorst, I know maybe one or two others, but I don't know the rest of them. I don't know if they have that qualifications to manage Rock, Rock Haven, to manage a budget, to determine what's the proper entity to come in. So I agree that they should have a role, but before we give them more, I need to, I need to get into that a little bit more, do some due diligence, whether, I know you were going pretty broadly with, with their scope of duties, but let's, let's take it slow. Let's take it one step at a time. That's all I'm, I'm saying at this point.
Well, I think, and I agree with you, Councilmember Najarian, I think we have, a lot of this has to be vetted out and talked about, and outreach has to be done. But my point was that this, this could be a partnership that serves everyone well. I'm not particularly assigning them all these duties, because, you know, they may not want to do them, and that's fine. So we, I agree, we'll, we'll vet, we'll let Mr. Calvert and staff vet it out and bring us a plan. And we'll continue our talks. As I said, I've already started to talk with Friends of Rock Haven, we've discussed this, I, I've got a good feeling of what they want, and we'll continue to do that. We will continue to bring them to the table and, and discuss what, what can be done there, what, what they, what their thoughts are.
Ms. Devine.
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian.
I, I'm okay with option two, and we start to get Rock Haven open as soon as possible. But I want to make sure that regardless which option we are taking, if it's not option four, it's another option. I raised the issue of to have some elements of affordable housing there.
I'm willing to consider that. I'm willing to consider that as well in the overall.
Okay.
I'm not foreclosing anything at this point.
Yeah, and, and Madam Mayor, I wouldn't close the door on any affordable housing on, on the site as well, not maybe on the site with the current structures, but on any adjoining site that would help us achieve our other goals as well.
Sure. Okay.
So that I want to be regardless, what will be considered, that element of affordable housing also to be considered with the rest of the project. Hopefully, we're gonna have Rock Haven open. We waited for such a long time, now we have some opportunities. And hopefully, Senator Portantino, as I said before, will help us to find the balance of the money. I know he can do it. And Senator Portantino, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to be clear, because between option one and option two, there's a difference about, in regard to the commercial opportunities, which I'm not ruling out. However, I do want to, I don't want us to risk the, the opening of this property to availability to the public, its use, and the establishment of a museum, because we are going to hunt and look for potential commercial tenants for any of the locations, including a restaurant. Obviously, restaurants are now just coming out of the pandemic, there's a lot of moving pieces in terms of how they're operating. I don't want to have everything hanging upon this one issue of, you know, having commercial uses there, which, sure, I think, you know, it would be great to have the tea room or whatever. By the way, I think there was a tea room on Honolulu, I don't know if it's still there, or I'm having someone nod and saying, yes, it is. But I haven't, let's see, it's my fault, I haven't been to a tea room recently, it's just on my list of things to do and I haven't had time. But I, I do think that we can look at, what I'd like to see come back is what the square footage of our current library is, what available square footage there is in all the buildings, so we can at least see that comparison. And if we can move the library use, which I believe there's a great synergy between, you know, we've even renamed that department, arts, library, arts and culture, and they do a great job with programming at the central library with the room for remembrance, I think that it would be a great partnership, along with the nonprofit, as we also have seen them do at the Brand Library and Friends of the Brand Library. And we don't have to do the renovation or expansion of a fire station there now, but once the library is moved, but at least it gives us the opportunity to do so further down the line. So that would be my request. And I'd like to make a motion for us to encumber these funds and start, start renovation to allow for public access as soon as possible.
And I'll second that. If it needs a second, I'll second it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just to, just to manage expectations, there is a lot of site work that has to be done, we believe, and, and the senator has clarified that with the Natural Resources Agency, that his intention was for the site work. But it, it won't be tomorrow that we can just open doors. But we do understand your desire to do that as quickly as possible as we're, as we're preparing the rest of the buildings.
Yes, Mr. Lansfield, I think that's exactly what we, we have, our intent is. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion for, I would think it was number two. Do we need to specify which alternative, since Mr. Kasakian wants to have?
Madam Mayor. I think.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
I apologize, yeah. So I think what I heard was option two, but obviously studying the library, looking at the library component into it, along with looking at the affordable housing on the vacant site, that's what I heard, and then obviously, the other elements are discussed by the council members.
Yes, and I was, and I was gonna add those. So thank you, Mr. Garcia. So there is a motion on the floor for that?
Yes, second.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes, I made the motion and Councilmember Brotman has seconded it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes.
There was a second motion to, Madam Mayor, there was a second motion to allow staff to finalize the grant agreement with the state National Resource Agency.
I will, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Is Mr., is Senator Portantino still on the phone?
No, he is not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer to the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Do we have phone calls?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. Herbert Milano, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Herbert.
Thank you very much. Mayor Devine and members of the city council, in two months, you will receive the comprehensive annual financial report. And in the last section, the statistical report, you can find a synopsis of the trends and operations of the city. Now, in six short months from now, you will all be faced with the start of the budget study process. And I'd like to suggest that you take a page from cities that have applied two concepts to direct the budget evaluation towards clearly stated goals. The first idea is creating an annual quality of life indicators report. This is not something new. The city of Glendale created a comprehensive one in 2002, and a modified one in 2009. The report measures indicators that are important for the city council to consider, like assessing negative trends or situations that have been stagnant and merit your attention. For example, an annual report on the high school graduation rate and its relationship to poverty and limited access to computers and the internet can then guide the city council to consider expanding library hours to help us with deficiencies. So this is how you look at a particular report like this, and say, here's the deficiency, here's how we can help. And then you establish a budget to ask for the needed. The report can indicate, for example, the parking available for 1,000 residents. And as most of you are aware, recreational area 10 has been extremely deficient for over 40 years, with an area equivalent to the size of two tennis courts for about 32,000 people. The council can look at that deficiency and include it for resolution in the capital improvement program, because it was identified in the quality of life indicators report. The second suggestion is the creation of a strategic plan. The concept has been used by many American cities for decades to align the objectives created a year before as to what is to be an objective measure of performance by city departments. It doesn't need to be extensive at first, but a strategic plan creates key performance indicators to which departments report annually. It establishes performance measures and establishes accountability. These two reports, when produced annually, identifies the needs of the residents, identifies gaps in services, and then establishes clear goals that the administration needs to accomplish. These two reports then align the needs and objectives to the budgeting process. The cities that embrace this concept have budgets clearly geared to serve the needs of the public first and incorporate the goals to make structural improvements and achieve greater quality of life for its residents. Glendale does not need to hire consultants or specialists to create basic reports. If both reports are aimed to address the most important issues the city faces, there are plenty of municipal published reports that can serve as a guide. I'm hoping for a receptive audience this year on both ideas. These ideas are not new and have been adopted by leading cities listed as the best places to live. A trial test of this idea during this year's budget session could finally give that process the traction it needs, put Glendale on the road to be among the best-run cities in the nation. If we are prudent with this budgeting process and attentive to the needs of the public and continually focused on the quality of life of its residents, we'll be on a long and steady journey to truly respond properly to the needs of the residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions after his, first of all, my question's, Mr. Galanian, was the last time we did an annual quality of life survey, 2006?
Madam Mayor, I don't recall, but more than likely it was more recent than that.
I, I seem to remember one more recent.
I want to say three years ago, a year before the pandemic started, but I'll have to confirm.
Yeah, maybe that's something we should look into doing again on a survey. And my second is, don't we use key performance indicators?
Madam Mayor, member city council, we have in the past have had an exhaustive list of key performance indicators. Our innovation team is working on reducing that number to a handful of meaningful KPIs for each department that we will utilize as a report that was, the caller had mentioned during our budget study session by each department, and to, to give council a toolbox to be able to, to set aside a funding for the programs and projects.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next caller.
Elise Calfayan, you have five minutes, Elise.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine and city council members and staff. Last Thursday, Governor Newsom announced a state agency's draft rule requiring new oil and gas well drilling to have 3,200-foot setbacks from homes, schools, community centers, and other sensitive receptors. For years, communities have been dealing with the health impacts of neighborhood oil drilling, which include cancer, preterm birth and low birth weights, and asthma and other respiratory diseases. Drilling near where people live, work, gather and go to school is a threat to public health and safety, and it overwhelmingly impacts low-income communities and communities of color. And it is primarily these communities that have been leading the fight against oil drilling in neighborhoods. So Governor Newsom's announcement last week of the draft rule is a first step in ending environmental racism of oil and gas drilling in neighborhoods. It's out for public comment. This rule should not be weakened in any way. We should be pushing for close We should be pushing for closing more loopholes in drilling regulations, shortening timelines for compliance, and making more rules apply to existing and abandoned wells. Our reliance on fossil fuels has devastating impacts from extraction to transport to energy generation and then into our air, soil, water, and lungs. It threatens our climate, our environment, and people's lives and health. I urge city council to keep all these costs in mind as council considers Glendale's future energy plans and the Grayson repowering proposal, which still includes a major investment in fossil fuel burning. We need to transition to clean energy as soon as possible and minimize to the greatest extent possible any reliance on gas for our energy needs. I urge everyone listening, please consider contacting Governor Newsom's office to thank him for announcing this draft rule and to urge him not to weaken it in any way. Let's advocate for an urgent transition to clean energy and a safe and healthy environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bert Culver, you have five minutes. Bert, go ahead. Mr. Culver?
Hi there. Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The causes of global warming and climate change are increased emissions of greenhouse gases, and the effects of this are rising temperatures and more severe natural disasters. If we continue to pollute our atmosphere by emitting greenhouse gases such as carbon dioxide into our atmosphere, it will cause more natural disasters, and they will be more severe. Glendale should not invest in new fossil fuel infrastructure. We should immediately put out new requests for proposals for renewable energy and transmission resources. We should put out an open-ended RFP for a solution to our alleged power island problem, which would attract solutions that GWP has not considered. We should immediately stop the EIR process and pursue 100% carbon-free options. Waiting until 2022 to consider the recirculated draft EIR and then later voting on the proposed fossil fuel plant once GWP comes up with a price is a waste of time as it is most likely won't pass. And if it does, it will be tied up in court for years. Glendale residents don't want to waste money on a new fossil fuel infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Culver.
Monica Campagna, Monica?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine. Good evening, council members and city staff. I'm continuing to call in with ideas that our utility and city might pursue to avoid new investments in gas at Grayson, much of which would simply be sitting there idle most of the year, acting as an extremely expensive insurance policy. I've spoken of the new utility reality, which must be flexible and look deeply at ways to shift and reduce load. I highlighted several electric vehicle load shifting programs, some that use hardware and others that only use software. Last week, I talked about a peak payback program that incentivized energy savings with bill credits. This week, I want to suggest council's adoption of reach codes, even if they are only needed for a year. This past August, the California Energy Commission unanimously approved the proposal to require builders to include solar and battery storage in many new commercial structures, including hotels, offices, and grocery stores, as well as high-rise residential projects. Their proposal also encourages electric heat pump technology for space and water heating and adopts electric-ready requirements for single-family homes. The CEC estimates that the 2022 energy code will result in $1.5 billion in consumer benefits over the next 30 years, as well as reducing 10 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions. The rules will now be taken up by California's Building Standards Commission, which is expected to include it in an overall revision of the building code in December and would go into effect January 1, 2023. So why should Glendale move forward with a reach code that would accomplish many of the same things? Well, if we jump into this current reach code cycle, which we could do, this is an entire year that new buildings would be built with solar and storage, helping to lower, not increase, our peak energy use in the city. Shortly, local reach codes will come forward as a topic at the Sustainability Commission. I hope you will support a solar and storage requirement for three-plus stories and commercial, and a requirement that supports building electrification, something we absolutely need to meet our climate goals. So in sum, we need solar, 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 and storage. We need all we can get, whether that be on city properties, private properties with the virtual power plant, commercial properties through a feed-in tariff program, feeding into battery storage to serve load after dark, or on privately-owned rooftops, helping to lessen our communal load. We need and should incentivize all of it. On a related topic, there's quite an attack going on right now on net metering in our state. Right at the moment, we need new solar to help combat the climate crisis. Private ownership should be valued. Every person that puts solar on their roof or invests in both solar and storage reduces load in general and reduces peak load when they have a battery. They reduce the investments that the utility has to make in capacity, which is something all rate payers benefit from. We have had, my family, solar and battery storage on our home for several years now, and we watch closely during the summer months especially to make sure we are staying completely off the grid during those hot summer nights. It feels great to do that, and I know we're reducing the peak load. Actually, we do this almost every single day from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're rarely ever on the grid during that time. People should know about the Great California Incentive called the S-GIP rebate, which stands for Self-Generation Incentive Program, which can greatly reduce the cost of the battery. We took advantage of this rebate, financed the cost, and that made the purchase of our system extremely affordable. And of course, we appreciate the lower utility bills. These are benefits that could be enjoyed by anyone building to meet a new reach code expectation. Please support a reach code requiring solar and storage, even if it's only needed for one year, to support load reduction, to support reduced peak loads, to help us do one more thing to help avoid new gas at Grayson. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Vicky Kaplan, you have five minutes. Vicky, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you this evening. This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting. My name is Vicky Kaplan. I live in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. I moved here with my husband and my three-year-old daughter during the pandemic in December. And I can tell you that one of the things I was most excited about in moving to Glendale this year with my family was learning about the Glendale Environmental Coalition and the efforts of residents of Glendale, along with the city council, to pursue 100% clean energy for the city. And so I'm excited to get to speak tonight, even though it's been a long night already. I've been watching all the proceedings and listening and learning a lot. You know, I don't know if folks here are aware that right now in Washington, D.C., in front of the White House, five young people, teenagers and people in their 20s, are on hunger strike. They're on day seven or eight of their hunger strike to call attention to the urgency of the climate crisis. They're putting their bodies and their health and their lives on the line because we all know, I think everybody here in this room knows, that we are out of time to act on climate change, to preserve a livable planet, healthy communities, clean air and water for ourselves and our children and future generations. It's all the more important for cities from Glendale to Los Angeles, across the country and the world, to take the actions that are within our reach. And so I was really pleased to know that in 2019, this body, this council, took steps to direct our city on a path of clean energy. But what I've learned and what I've understood is that the plan that we're looking at right now actually has no new clean energy, which is a real disappointment. I think the door is not closed, and I'm calling for the city council here to do what I think we've heard from the last several commentators tonight calling in in our free time to address you, is to add more clean renewable energy, solar, wind, battery storage. There is absolutely no excuse for any new gas burning capacity anywhere in the United States at this point. And I look forward to working hand-in-hand with the council, as well as with my neighbors and residents, to make that happen. The time is now. We have no time to waste. I think we'll be seen in history as making a difference for our children and for future generations. And I appreciate the efforts of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. And I also organize with Da'enu, a Jewish call, the Climate Action, organizing Jewish communities around the country to show leadership in addressing the climate crisis. So this is for my three-year-old daughter, whose birthday is tomorrow, for future generations, for your children and grandchildren. I look forward to working with you for 100% clean energy in the City of Glendale right away. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you, thank you. I just wonder, isn't that what we're working for? 100% clean energies, isn't that what we're doing? I mean, she, you know, not that, I just wonder what people out there are thinking when they're saying, you know, why aren't you going, why aren't you trying to get there? And please, we are trying, we're doing our best. What's next, please?
Madam Mayor, I have a question, if I can ask.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Of staff, I guess. You know, we heard all the speakers talking about the dedication to the environment that Governor Newsom has, but am I correct that he just permitted five new gas plants to be constructed? So I'm at a disconnect here because he's this great guy, he's fighting oil wells, but five new gas plants, which is much worse than what the worst Glendale plan was. Talk about stranded assets, talk about reverting to dirty energy. I mean, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but that's something I have to wrap my head around because I don't understand it. Why would a dedicated environmentalist, as Governor Newsom appears to be, approve five, not just recharging, but construction of five new gas plants? I don't, I don't know. I'm confused.
Any comments from staff on that one?
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, council members, yes, Governor Newsom did buy five new LM2500s and put them strategically, their mobile units, they put them strategically throughout the state to prevent or to minimize the potential for rolling blackouts. They also allowed diesel generation to try to circumvent or prevent rolling blackouts. We're in an energy crunch, so I find it very ironic that he supervised and authorized the California Department of Water and Power to purchase these units.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, while we have Mr. Young at the podium, it may be a good opportunity, if you could allow him a few minutes, to cover essentially what council previously had directed staff to move forward with our clean energy initiatives and programs because it appears like almost every Tuesday evening, we do get calls from some of our residents and your constituents with information that may not be totally accurate. So just to set the record straight and to remind the viewers at home what our plan is and some kind of status update from GWP.
Thank you, that would be great.
Thank you. In 2018, the city council didn't approve the final EIR for the original Grayson 262-megawatt repower, and they asked GWP for, looked for cleaner options. We then issued Clean Energy RFP, and we opened up that RFP to any and all opportunities for us to reduce our carbon and environmental exposure based on the 262 megawatts. We got 34 submittals. We picked Franklin, Lime, Sunrun, the five Wartzilla engines, and 75-megawatt, 300-megawatt-hour Bass units. All the while through 2000, from 2018 to now, Power Management also engaged in a White Grass geothermal project, Star Peak geothermal project, the E-Lin solar and battery storage project. We increased our share of the IPP project because we knew that it was going hydrogen, and that would be one of the first all-hydrogen power plants in, if not the country, if not the world, definitely the country, with the addition of being able to pick up new transmission because of our involvement in hydrogen. And we're in our final stages of purchasing another solar project. So if you were to look at the amount of energy that we actually purchased between 2018 and today, it would equate to about 27% of our load was purchased by brand-new renewable projects from Power Management and GWP. So it's not like we aren't doing anything. We're doing everything in our power to obtain the renewable assets and to be able to meet the loads of the city. Electrifications of buildings and the electrification of vehicles create a much more complicated process. Los Angeles believes that with the electrification of buildings and the electrification of vehicles, it's going to double their load. Their load is 6,500, it's going to go to 13,000. If that were to happen here, our load would go from 350 to 700 megawatts. I don't anticipate that to happen, but if we would have 700 megawatts and our import capability was only 240, 270 megawatts, we would have to locally generate. So we're doing everything in our power. With the Alternative 7 and Alternative 8, it is not a Grayson expansion, it's a contraction. If you look at the capacity and the size, Alternative 8 is a 64% reduction in the original proposal, and the Alternative 8 is a 61% reduction in the original proposal. If you look at carbon exposure and the amount of carbon that's expected to be used, Alternative 7 is an 89% reduction in carbon from the original 262-megawatt option, and Alternative 8 is about 86%. So I think these numbers are staggering. These are numbers are exactly what the council has asked me to do, and GWP has responded well. It's not possible to get to 100% renewable energy based on the limited transmission constraints that we have. We've actually seen that through the clean energy or the 100% study by 2030 report, and we indicate that we can get to 89%. I looked at the power content label this year, and our power content label, "clean", was 64% clean. So the amount of energy and the energy purchased to produce and to supply the load of the city was 64% clean. None of our neighbors were that close, not even close. So we are doing everything in our power to do what was directed by reducing the amount of carbon and exposure to the environment, but we also need to meet the load. And if load is going up and we still have a limited transmission capability, it makes it very impossible for me to shut down thermal generation. If I can find alternative ways, I'm looking every day to find that alternative option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young, that was excellent. I hope that our viewers were listening and took that into their computers up here and maybe won't, you know, none of this happens overnight either, you know? Everything that we're doing takes time. To want it, you know, we want it, we want it now is, you know, just, we have to be patient. We're working at, I know you are working very hard, the staff is working very hard to bring this to fruition. So what's next, please?
Move to adjourn.
I have new business.
There is new business.
Oh, there is new business.
New business, okay.
I have new business.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
I'm going to go slow and frustrate Councilmember Agajian. I know he wants to go. Okay, start. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of McCune &amp; Harbour LLP, Dana McCune, to represent the city in the case of Akop Jack Organesyan versus City of Glendale et al., Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 19GDCV01045, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, and what's next?
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned at 9:30 p.m. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good meeting.